Okay, seeing that it's 7:15, we'll start with our first appointment. The Halifax zoning board of appeals. Oh, these are the minutes. All these are the seconds and minutes also. That first one was for the executive session. And this is for the regular minutes of the regular meeting from March 11, 2019. So I'm gonna need a motion or are there any changes, deletions, or exceptions that anybody found reading over the regular minutes? No? All right, can I have a motion to accept the minutes of March 11, 2019?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for Monday, March 11, 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to accept the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I was not present for that, so I will not be... Sorry, Alan, I've got a little mixed up there. All right, seeing that it's approximately 7:15, we'll start with the first petition. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 8, 2019 at 7:05 PM in meeting number one of the town hall, which has now been moved to the great hall, of 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. on the application by Bearwood Renovations for a special permit and variance to raise and rebuild the existing house due to fire at 30 Oak Place, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Tia O'Meara of 30 Oak Place, Halifax, Mass., as shown on assessors' map, lot number 11, title reference book 17828, page 112. The applicant seeks a special permit to raise and rebuild the existing house, which would constitute a continuation of a nonconforming use, section 167-8A. As the applicant is also exceeding the original height of the structure and expanding the building horizontally, a variance from the height restriction in 167-8D is required, as well as a variance from the left side setback from 30 feet to 16 feet, and the right side setback from 30 feet to 16 feet, in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under section 167-11, table of dimensional and density regulations. Area is zoned residential petition number 892, Halifax zoning board of appeals. Is the applicant present?
Yeah.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Okay, can you want to explain to the board briefly what you plan on doing?
Actually, yeah, well, so you had a fire.
I'm sorry, your name, sir?
Carl Momo, for Bearwood Renovations.
And you're the builder, the contractor?
The homeowner, Tia, had a fire, so the whole, the house was a total loss. So what we plan to do is... Center the, center the house back on the property.
What's that?
That's the, that's the house condition now.
And this is just a copy of what you gave us?
Yeah, yes. So we want to expand the footprint a little bit, bring it, even though it's nonconforming, be more, you know, less nonconforming, centering the lot, so it's even on both sides, so we got to 16 feet on both sides.
How would it be less nonconforming?
Well, you know, it's just, it's, we're trying to get it more, and so we're not so encroached on one side to the other side.
Is the pre-existing house shown on the, on the map yet?
You can see the dotted lines. The dock square is the, what we proposed to do, and the dashed square is what was there before.
What, inside?
Yeah. Not the hash marks, see these little marks right there?
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So on the left side, you're changing the existing side setback from 10 feet to 16 feet?
Correct.
And on the other side, it's, currently it's 21 feet, and you're looking for 16 feet?
Correct, yes.
All right, could you explain the, the height restriction or why you need the variance? Are you going more than two stories, or?
It's a story and a half, but it's higher than it was.
Oh, oh, I see what you mean. It's not, it's not in excess of the, of the building code?
I don't know.
No, your existing is 40, isn't it?
Your name, sir?
Ken Harrington, Toolman, that was the, he's the architect.
Oh.
His existing is 40, is it, for the town to the peak?
Right.
Yeah, no, this isn't any, it's only one and a half stories.
Okay, just the fact that it was, it was...
It's bigger than it was.
Bigger than it was?
Yeah. It was a single house, sorry.
It's gonna remain a, a single family?
Single family, yes.
I'll open up to any questions from members of the board? What's that?
I don't know if she already knew we were passing around the minutes, so she might not already read it.
Yeah, I read it. You and I, if I...
We don't need this, all right?
Good, I'll open up to questions from members of the board?
What's on either side of the property? Houses?
Houses on both sides.
Have you had any contact with any of the neighbors, the butters?
I have not myself, no.
Is the septic system being changed or altered, or is it same?
No, the septic system is fine and pest.
Was there a basement in the previous structure?
I think there was a partial disaster.
And what are you having now?
It'll be a hole.
How about access to the property? Where is the driveway gonna be? Same place?
Same, it comes right up by, yeah.
That's where it's existing?
Yeah, yeah, nothing, it's not, it's changing.
What's the front setback? For, uh, I can't read it.
98, 99 feet.
99? And what's the rear setback? We all sat there too. 46, proposed 42. There's a deck on there. It says eight by 10 deck on the back. What's the small structure there? Is that a bulkhead or something, or what is that?
Yeah, but now that's gonna be wrong. If you're looking from the rear, the rear right's gonna be a walkout, you got the green solid going off. There's an elevation that shows on the back. We did away with the bulkhead, we're gonna do a walkout. That's the, that's the rear elevation.
Is there a deck on the back now?
There is a deck on the back now.
I couldn't tell in the picture.
So the deck on here is proposed deck?
Uh, it's, it's replacing what is there. There's already a deck there, we're just, obviously, we have to take it down.
The rear setback's 42 feet to the corner of the house?
Yes.
Does that have to include the deck?
What's that? I thought it had, it had to include the deck unless it was pre-existing.
It's new homes, though.
It's what?
New homes.
The deck is going, right?
But he's rebuilding the deck.
He's rebuilding it.
No, you are, okay.
And it's not included in the setback. The setback's 42 feet, so it'd be, it'd be 32 feet.
From the property line, so he's really not...
What do we need in the way of phone? 15, 30, 30, 40. So does he need a, does he need a, for the deck?
The way I've always thought, yeah, so he needs a variance for the rear setback too, doesn't he?
It's not increasing the, it's not increasing, because the deck is the sample, right? So maybe he needs a variance, and conformity is already 60 feet.
Let's ask Amy. Amy, where it's a new deck, a deck replacement, would they need a rear set variance? Were they rebuilding the pre-existing deck?
Are they increasing the nonconformity at all? Are they?
It's not, the deck isn't any bigger.
No.
Right, it's just the same.
So what is the existing deck at? How many, how many, what's the setback?
Doesn't say.
40?
42. All 32?
And what will it be?
Approximately the same.
The same. Yeah, they're not increasing the nonconformity, yeah.
They're not.
So 42.
Thank you. So, so you're, so you're gaining, looks like, you're gaining six feet on one side and losing five on the other, right? So in effect, you're...
So balancing it off on both sides.
Yeah, you're, in effect, decreasing, even though you're going more on one side.
Exactly. And the house itself, with overall existence versus that, is about foot, foot narrow than what's existing with the jobs that exist in this.
So the first floor square footage would be what as compared to its existing?
Existing now is about 627, and proposed is about 745, so about 126.
You just lost all that sense of those house chats.
Are there any butters in the audience that'd like to, yes, ma'am, could you stand and identify yourself, please?
We're just discussing this...
And your name, ma'am, I'm sorry?
My name is Kelly Atkinson.
And where do you live, ma'am?
On 15 Crystal Lake Road.
Okay.
I got a notice, although I'm not directly beside the house.
Correct.
One removed.
Yep.
This here is my neighbor who lives on Oak Place. She lives across the way from the burnt-out house. The upper one, the then. But you said you did get a lot, right? I got, I got, okay, so, I think you should stand up too.
That's, well, that's fine, you know...
Her concern is the view from her house. This property is on a lake, Crystal Lake.
Right.
Um, there's, I'm assuming she cannot build any closer to the water because of the conservation laws. So that's a question I would have, is that, are we sure that that's not gonna happen? You're saying it's a bigger deck, is it closer to the water? I don't know.
It, it does not, it does not encroach any further or closer to the, to the water than what's pre-existing there right now.
Okay, the second issue we have is are we entitled to see the plans?
Of course, yes, you are.
And then how high is the house going to be? You're gaining one and a half stories, now you're gonna put a full basement in, so that's the bottom floor, correct? Then you're gonna expand, right? You're gonna expand the footprint of the first floor, and then you're gonna have a second floor.
That's gonna be a little narrower than it was. Footprint wide, side to side, as it went down.
Okay, that was a blind understanding. I have a neighbor who had looked at the plans because she couldn't come in tonight, and it was her understanding that it was gonna be six feet closer to her place, and the same on the other side. So I'm not understanding, you're not expanding the footprint.
No, it was 21 on one side, it's going to 16 on one side, that side's five feet closer, and there's 10 feet on the other side, and that's going to 16. So it's basically just short of six feet.
Just centering it in the lot.
We're centering it on the lot.
And if you're looking at the house, from the, from the drive, from Oak Place, for instance, which side is going to be bigger?
It'll move to the, it'll move to the left five feet, it's moving to the left five feet.
Okay, that's it.
Correct, if you're standing on the road, it moves to the left five feet.
Okay, so how many stories in all?
It's just one story. It's with a, with a lot, technically, it's been to one and a half.
Technically, it's one and a half.
Yeah.
One and a half, so a half is a lot.
Like a king.
Yeah.
If you'd like to see the plan, you could certainly take a look at mine. Oh, that's even... Your address, sir?
32 Oak Place.
Okay.
I'm the one on the left side, I'm the side.
Okay.
There is a very large oak tree, that's a good effect. We do share the roadway together. I had put an addition on about 10 years ago, and I was not allowed anywhere, except my, to watch them.
Right. How close are you to the lot line?
Uh, it's close. Type 4 was down there.
Right.
It's a very lot.
I don't have my plot planned in front of me, so I don't know if I would, if I know I had, would, if I had, if I was not allowed to visit, because I was at Oak Place.
Right.
So on the, it was a site that shows the neighbors two there, dimensions from the seven, that's all, so one is 15.
One is 16, the other is 17.
Yeah, 16 and 17?
Yeah, so that basically around all the seven, that's it.
Same, same size.
So, so looking at the house from the street, looking at, at this house, you're the house to the left?
Yes.
Right, and this shows that you're 16...
16 and a half.
16 and a half feet from, from the side lot line, and, and they're proposing 16-1? On your side? Well, according to that? Well, according to what, you know, and they can only build what's presented, they, they, any substantial change would have to come back to the board, so, so what, what they apply forward to the board is, is what that's gonna be there.
But I don't know how that affects the trees out there, and everything, you know, there is, I have a...
Would there, I'll see if I can find out for you, would there be trees removed or whatnot? Carl, would there be trees removed from the lot?
There is a very large oak tree that's pretty...
We're not anticipating moving any trees, I don't do, I don't, I haven't been there in a while, so I don't remember the law, but I don't remember seeing any trees that have to be moved to do what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Because we're just, the house is basically sliding five feet. That's all, so...
All right, anybody else, members of the audience that'd like to either ask a question or make a statement? Okay, if the board members don't have any further questions, do I have a, a motion? It's normally the, the practice of the board that we go out and review, inspect the, the lot, unless there is a motion that someone's familiar with, or would like to make a motion, I'll accept any at this point.
Does have trees out here, mind yourself, I don't know if they're just because you know, like...
Well, I'm, I'd like to make a comment that I am a little bit familiar with that area. I, I do think that a, a house of this caliber, certainly compared to what was there, would only increase the established charac, character of the neighborhood, would only increase the value, the property values of everybody in the neighborhood. I don't think it would be any type of detriment. And I myself personally think that it would certainly benefit the neighborhood down there, but I don't know if, does the board feel we should, we need to go out and do a site inspection?
I'm also familiar with the area.
Okay, you can have a seat, sir, we're all set, thank you. I'm sorry?
I said I'm also familiar with the area, I live right around the corner, so I've, I saw the place when I went up in flames, so I'm familiar with, with the, I mean, basically the homes are pretty typical along there, one level type homes that are in the, in the section here. Looking at the drawings here, does not look that much different than what the homes of the, there now.
Anybody else that's offered opinion that they're not familiar with the area, anyone like to do an onsite?
Even, even from the plans, it looks like there, it's a decrease in the total nonconformity of the, the property right now, even though it's a shift.
Are there, let me ask you, are there other two-story slash one-and-a-half-story homes on that, on that street in that neighborhood?
The one right next to it, the left, is a, it's a, basically, it's a one-and-a-half story cake. It's a quite large footprint as well, it's on a much larger lot. I think it's existing home 32, I think is what it's listed on the survey now, which is also 16 feet from the property line.
Okay, if there is no motion from members of the board, then we'll schedule an onsite.
I'll make a motion to waive the onsite, sorry.
Okay, there's a, well, let's see, voting on this will be Jerry, Bob, myself, Peter, and Casaya. So there's a motion that's in a second on the floor to waive the onsite inspection. Jerry?
Yes.
Yes? I go, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, it passes, fact or none. So basically, we'll vote on this tonight, you know, you won't have to postpone the, the board's decision for another month until we do the onsite, where every board members are familiar with the area. Okay, I'll, I'll accept the, a motion regarding petition number 892.
Petition to accept 892 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and second to accept petition 892. Again, I'll ask for a voice vote. Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Saia?
Yes.
And myself, a vote yes. So it, it passes five to zero. Okay, I don't know if you're familiar with it, you can contact Alan, the secretary, regarding the paperwork. Okay, thank you.
Have a good night, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, now we're adding dead stuff on this one. Okay, petition number 893. 893. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 8, 2019 at 7:15 PM in meeting number one of the town hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. on the application by Mr. Robert J. Picarelli, trustee of 341 Ponson Street Realty Trust, for a special permit to extend necessary, oh, to the extent necessary, at 341 Ponson Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by 341 Ponson Street Realty Trust. Robert J. Picarelli, trustee, as shown on assessors' map 52, lot 424, title reference book 41312, page 158. The applicant seeks a special permit to ex, to the extent necessary for the continuation of a nonconforming structure in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax, 167-8A and C. Area is zoned commercial, business, petition number 893. Mr. Picarelli? I saw him here, I know he's here. Oh. Your name, sir?
Attorney Rob Dambroso of Dambroso Law and Order. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Picarelli tonight, as you mentioned, he's the trustee of the 341 Ponson Street Realty Trust, which owns the property on that site. I just want a word of caution, I'm pinch-hitting tonight for Richard Cirque, a longtime Plymouth lawyer, he was suddenly taken ill last week, so I don't have full command of the history, please be patient with me, but I've done my best to get up to speed, there's just a few days here. By way of background, in May of 2014, some of you may have been sitting on this board, this board granted a special permit to Mr. Picarelli for the continuation and alteration of an existing nonconforming structure, actually, two structures on this single lot. A copy of that was provided with the submittal that was made on March 9th to you. That special permit was granted in 2014 and allowed Mr. Picarelli to continue and extend the pre-existing nonconforming use on the site, and also to alter the structures internally with more than 50% of the structure's value, hence the need for a special permit. You know, I understand that the butters, butters, neighbors, parties of interest are pleased with the project, it's certainly, as I understand it, a betterment to what was on-site prior to the work. It's, of course, provided rental units, which I believe are needed in town, and a tax revenue. No complaints about tenants, no property issues, so we view the project as a success to date, and certainly the use is much less intensive than it could have been, you know, in light of what abuts the site. We're here tonight because condition number three of that 2014 permit requires us to return for an extension of that permit. Since the completion of the work under the permit, there's been no alteration of structure, no change in the use, we believe...
Same number of units?
Yes.
Same number of units?
Same number of units that were permitted at that time, and no changes in use, no issues, so we feel that we are complying with the conditions of the special permit. We're here in what we view as a formality in many regards to just request an extension, and I would like to speak to that at the end of my remarks about the future need for a full notice hearing versus an administrative act to permit further extensions of this special permit.
Anything else, not to interrupt you, but anything else change on the property as far as ownership or anything like that?
Same, all right.
It's been the same since the original application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yeah, no, no changes since the application. So I would like to reserve just a minute or two to speak toward future conditions if the board sees it fit to renew the permit tonight, but before I do that, I would invite you, at your, at your discretion, sir, to, you know, reference any issues you're aware of with the permit, anything that the board wanted to bring to the attention of the applicant that we can address at this time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any, any questions from the board members regarding the property, the petition? I think you pretty much covered it, it's, the, the number of units remain the same, there's no additions as far as fencing, any complaints or anything like that have been submitted as far as zoning goes, we've had nothing?
No, sir, not to my knowledge. No structural alterations, the interior hasn't even, you know, was newly renovated pursuant to the 2014 permits, so I don't believe anything's even been done to the interior of the structure, so kind of a status quo without any...
Any other questions, guys? You have anything, problems?
No, no complaints or anything, I think that's, that's fine.
So this permit was issued, this has been, it's been five years, and that's coming back for the...
Yes, sir, yes, we're required to come back on the five-year anniversary, so, so if I may, we'd ask if we do grant the extension tonight, we had asked in January that this be allowed administratively in light of the fact that nothing's changed with the use, so, you know, we would make that request again, and ask that if you do grant the permit, that the conditions tonight vary from what was done in 2014 in the sense that, you know, to save the applicant's expense, the time with the board, and the resources of the town, if you wrote a condition that provided that, you know, to the, you know, if you had no knowledge of any compliance issues, no complaints, you could certainly send the zoning enforcement officer out to view the site and, you know, and confirm that there have been no alterations of any kind, but we would ask that you administratively allow the next go-round to prevent this kind of recurring, the use of resources. Something was, by analogy, recently done, you may be familiar with the in-law units, there was a change to the bylaw, I can hand out a copy of that, that did allow, in that context, again, to prevent everyone that has an in-law unit from coming back every five years, to allow it to be granted, the renewal to be granted administratively, and we would seek similar relief here, you know, and of course, the board always has oversight and the ability to enforce any conditions to the extent there's been any violations or issues that you could require a hearing, but it would give you the discretion to waive it if you saw fit.
Right.
So that's one request, and then the other request, which again is analogous to what was done with the in-law apartments, and I'll just, may I pass out a, just a one-pager? I wouldn't hit you with the new material on the fly here, but just so you can see the language I'm referencing by analogy, we would ask, the only other change we would ask for is that this permit, like, men's special permit, run with the land and not be specific to the applicant, you know, there are a variety of reasons for that.
David, under, under a current zoning with, with the town, I mean, this is proposed, right? Under a current zoning, though, it, it does run with the applicant? It would have to be changed by, by town vote, is, is basically what I'm saying.
In truth, you know, perhaps town council would, would address it, I don't believe there's a bylaw that squarely addresses the situation, it's kind of want a first impression because of this, you know, it is a unique situation, that's why we're here, the special permit in the first case, so, you know, I think that that's, you know, that change was made for a reason, you know, and I think the value of it is that if you don't run a permit with the land, it creates uncertainty for the landowner, and it's a disincentive to maintain and improve the property, not knowing if you are marketable and the value's gonna be retained, so those would be the two requests, if you did grant relief, we'd ask that those two conditions be altered from the past.
If it's a, just point of question, Amy, if, if it's, if it's not a matter voted by, by the town, if there was a change to that in regard to what the attorney is speaking to, could that be upheld without a vote from the town, look changing that bylaw?
So, so your bylaw doesn't necessarily require that this type of special permit run with the land, your bylaw does require that certain special permits do run with the person or run with the land, so for example, in-law apartments actually run with the owner, which makes sense, because you require that the in-law apartment be occupied by a family member. In this instance, it's more of a, it's a, it's a special permit for a nonconforming use, for a noncon... In this instance, it's more of a, it's a special permit for a non-conforming use, and I recall it was also for a non-conforming structure, extending a non-conforming structure, but that's simply the same as the last special permit that you just did, which is extension of a non-conforming, extension of a non-conforming structure, it was a little different because there was a fire there, but those type of special permits do not have to run with the person. However, there is case law out there in Massachusetts, there's Massachusetts case law that says that the zoning board of appeals can require that a special permit run with the owner, and that you can also condition it, you know, time, limitations of use, things like that. Your bylaw specifically allows you to condition special permits also, but here, it's not a, it's not an in-law apartment, and the fact that it has operated for five years without complaint, I'm not really sure what the benefit of keeping it attached to an owner would be. And then, you haven't asked me, but with regard to the term of the special permit...
Yeah, Amy, what about the term?
So, right now, thank you for asking. So, right now, in Massachusetts, there's a lot of case law out there that says if the term, if a term of a special permit is amended, you start all over again, because there's no provision in 48, section nine, for amending or revising special permits that have already been granted. So, if there's a term that's going to be different, for example, you have, you had in your last, in the 2014 decision, it specifically stated that the term of the, of the special permit is for five years. So, the applicant has to come back for a full hearing pursuant to 48, section 11, which means notifying the Butters, holding a public hearing, you know, advertising in the newspaper. So, if you do want to change that provision, what you, it is, you are issuing a new special permit tonight, so you would issue a new special permit, and if you want to have this five-year check-in, because you are allowed to condition special permits, I would suggest it be a five-year administrative check-in, and it specifically state that it has to happen at a public meeting, as opposed to a public hearing. So that means that there doesn't have to be notification to a Butters publication, but it will happen at a public meeting, it will be on the agenda, and then you could also, you know, you could go so far as to say, if that five-year check-in does not happen, it is cause for revocation, so therefore, you know that it will happen.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment to this property? Yes, sir, your name and your address, please?
Amy, I'm from the Woodhills Street. I just want to bring to the board's attention, 2014, when you brought this special permit up, it's been stated that Mr. Melius was the zoning enforcement officer, and he recused himself. He stated in the meeting, the reason why he recused himself is because of a friendship or familiarity with the applicant, but Mr. Melius has said, said in open meetings, as a member of the selectmen, he has an interest in this property.
Mr. Melius has?
Mr. Melius has an interest in this property. Mr. Melius and Mr. Picarelli have a business together called Paradise Properties LLC that hasn't been disclosed by any disclosure of ethics. I'd also like to bring to your attention that the zoning enforcement officer that was brought in, in 2014 to look at this, was Mr. Frank Day Felice, who was a former business partner of Mr. Melius, so I have copies of those documents that are live here. So, I just want you to review this and have an understanding of what was done in 2014 and what was not brought out in public at the point in time, that there are ethical issues that haven't been disclosed, there's no filings in the town clerk's office by either Mr. Picarelli or Mr. Melius stating that they have a business together.
Would you care to address that, sir?
Yes, Chairman, I mean, I just would like to emphasize to the board, I'm sure it's clear to you, but we're not here to, you know, rehear the 2014 petition, you know, the work's been done, it's been compliant for five years, we're simply here pursuant to the terms of the permit that was granted by this board in 2014, it requires us to make an appearance for a renewal, so, you know, there's a concept in law res judicata, we don't reopen a can of worms that's been closed, I mean, it's not efficient to have a full hearing and revisit...
I have a question, too, back in 2014, during the 20-day appeal period, was this matter brought to the attention of the...
I didn't know this until recently, found out when I went down, double-checked with the board's office.
Okay.
So, the relationship that's been there, the ethical disclosure hasn't taken place, the fact that they brought in somebody to review this that had connection with one of the owners, I don't understand how you can take what was done at that point in time and not review whether or not each unit should have had 750 square feet as the bylaw requires, to ask for a waiver from that petition 80808, that wasn't granted in this petition 802. So, that's something that's being enforced on a different petition, it looks like it will be before you tonight, that each apartment in a multifamily has to have 750 square feet.
Is that specified in the permit, the square footage of the...
It is not, Mr. Chairman, and if I may, would you please ask the commenter to disclose his interest in the proceeding, I'm not clear on what his role is, if it pleases the board.
I'm an elected officer of the town, sworn to uphold the bylaws of the town.
Are there any other comments, or anything from the Butters, or any of the townspeople that would like to voice their concerns? Okay, gentlemen, what's the pleasure of the board? First of all, is everybody familiar with the property that we're talking about? Mia's Ice Cream, that is your best, you know, where we're talking, right next to Mia's to the left there?
I'm familiar with the property.
Yeah, William also?
Yeah, two things, first, this is for in-law apartments, and this isn't an in-law apartment, so this really doesn't have anything to do with the property that we're talking about, except to kind of give us an example of one way that the town has given us a way to handle special permits.
Yes, sir.
So, I think we, kind of, and you had clarified, if we want to bring it back in five years, we can do that, and I think the reason that we wanted to, and I'm just speaking myself, but the reason that we wanted to review this in five years was that we had a pretty lengthy set of hearings going into this special apartment, where we went there, and I think we may have gone more than once, and we kind of went through this process and wanted to make sure that it was, A, before we voted on it, before I voted on it, we had a thorough hearing, and B, to kind of review in five years if there were any lasting issues from the property that we could review, and it doesn't seem to be any today, and I didn't have any concerns about, you know, at the time, any of that stuff, and it doesn't seem like there's anything that's lingering that way, so, unless somebody else has something they want to add, so, just to add that stuff in.
Okay, thank you. Where it's been, as Peter has stated, where it's been five years, is it the pleasure of the board to continue with five, to continue it over to 10, or what's the pleasure of the board?
I think we should continue at one hundred and five.
Jerry, what do you think?
I would go in the same, same respect, we'll continue with five years and have you return again.
Do you?
I think so, and I'd also like to make a comment that, you know, rental properties are needed in the communities, surrounding communities, you know, housing is very diff, homes are very difficult for people to buy, and, you know, this is filling a tremendous need into society.
Well...
I'll agree with the five.
Yep.
I'd be comfortable doing it five years for a public meeting instead of the public hearings, so we can go through an administrative proposal, I'm interested to hear if there's issues with the property, but I don't know if we're doing it...
But to re-advertise and all that, or not, and I'll say you could do it in an open...
Because I think we need to put it into a hearing, we can do that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Jerry?
I'll go with that.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, how about a motion? I'll entertain a motion on...
Motion 893, as presented with a five-year...
Open meeting?
Open meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor to accept petition number 893 with the condition of a five-year review, where a open meeting would be, would discuss any problems that may have occurred over the five-year period from its initiating as of this year.
To extend it above a meeting.
To extend, to a... Did I, okay.
Yeah, yeah, here.
All right, so I have a motion and a second, do you have a voice vote, Jerry?
Yes.
Ball?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Kazaya?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. Petition passes 5-0 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, our next one, petition number 894, Campbell Lewis, 330 Plymouth Street, variance for parking. Okay, we have the Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 8, 2019, at 7:25 PM in meeting room number one of the town hall, 499 lot Plymouth Street in Halifax, Mass., on the application by Campbell Lewis for variances for off-street parking and minimum loading area at 330 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Hutton Team LLC of 736 Cherry Street, Chattanooga, Tennessee, as shown on assessor's map number 63, lot 30, title reference book 42758, page 1. The applicant seeks variance permitting to the off-street parking requirements in according with the Halifax zoning bylaws, section 167-14, and minimum loading area, section 167-3. First, a variance is requested for 34 parking spaces down from the required 73 parking spaces, section 167-14F, for the 7,225 square foot retail facility. Second, a variance is requested for 17 parking spaces with a paved area of 180 square feet down from the required 200 square feet, section 167-14. Third, a variance is requested for a proposed loading area with dimensions of 20 and a half feet wide and 35 feet long as proposed to the required minimum loading area dimensions of 14 feet wide by 45 feet wide, section 167-3. Area resowned commercial business petition number 894, Halifax zoning board of appeals. Let me sign this.
This is more under a tone. I gotta do everything, don't I? Yes, you do. Your stamp hasn't come in yet.
Hi.
Hey.
How are you? Your name, sir?
I'm Mr. Virch, I'm a civil engineer with Civil Engineering, I'm here on behalf of Campbell Lewis from Hutton Development, and I'm here to discuss the proposal O'Reilly's at 330 Plymouth Street. Just to situate you guys, the property is south of the Zara's Farm, north of Metro Bank, and it is east of the Plymouth Street, Plymouth Street and just west of some vine lands and wetlands up into the, owned by this guy.
Owned by what, I'm sorry?
Mr. Peck, Captain Mr. Peck. So, what we're proposing is 7,225 square foot O'Reilly's Auto Parts store, I don't know if anybody's familiar with it, it's similar to an auto zone. We have 34 total parking spaces, and 17 of them we are requesting to waive, 167-14 for the side parking. The 17 in the front do conform to your 200 square foot requirements by being 10 foot by 20. The ones on the, the 17 on the side, we reduced from, to 18 by 10, so they're 180 square foot total, so 50% of them are against, we're getting trying to weigh for the size of the parks. The quantity, so for your answer, 7,225 square foot retail store, you need about 73 parking spaces. O'Reilly's typically, they generally do 32 to 36 parking spaces, so we're trying to propose 34. At their peak outing, they really only require 14 people, 14 spaces, because their customer base at the peak outing, traffic's about 14. Unfortunately, O'Reilly's doesn't like to go any lower than 32, it's kind of a prototypical. So, 73 parking spaces, it's a lot for what they need, so that is one of the ways that we're trying to get from the gas, of areas. And then the last thing is, we have a loading space here at 35 by 20.5. You require 14 by 45, so even if the 18 by 35 or 20 by 35, it's about 630 square feet, we do 20 by 35, it's a little more like 700 square feet. Your requirements are 14 by 45, and that equals 630 square feet, so we're just, basically, we're just asking for a reduction in the total weight. How they typically load is they pull in and kind of come at an angle, and then they use pallet loading to come up, and with overhead door to the self-portion ability. So, they don't really need like a loading dock or anything, it's all pallet, pallet loading. And that's, those are the three variances we're asking for relief from.
Okay, a couple of questions.
Sure.
What do you have with delivery trucks, are we talking tractor-trailers?
They're maybe 50s, which, so they're 35-foot bed, roughly, and so 50-foot, um, truck. And the, the driver was designed to be able to maneuver that truck.
Does the square footage of the lot that the building's going to sit on, could that accommodate 73 parking spaces?
It cannot, no, especially with the stormwater, the strip stormwater design that we had to follow, the stormwater manual, so this majority back here is our infiltration detention basin, because we're budding wetlands here, so we want to be able to store the water all along, and be able to reach out as much water as we can before just shouting out to the corner here, and to do that, we needed as much space as we can in the back. Yeah, I mean, 73 spaces, we'd double it back here, and yeah, it's just, like I said, O'Reilly's isn't needed, so it's an increase in impervious area that is really unnecessary, and increasing any more impervious area in this area would increase runoff, stormwater runoff, so it's actually beneficial in that respect.
And what was the floor space of the building again?
So, from outer edge, it's 7,225 square feet, the sale area is really only 3,000 square feet, like I said, it's typical to an auto zone, where they have a lot of storage in the back, and their restrooms are in the back, so 3,000 square feet is where the actual customer area is.
None of the back parking lot would be used for any type of outside storage or anything like that?
No.
Trailers, box trailers, anything like that?
No, and they don't even, they don't even allow any maintenance on the property at all, like if somebody went in and popped up their car to get underneath, they don't allow any maintenance on-site.
I'm more thinking along the lines of car parts and parts that would be for sale would be, no outside storage?
No, no outside storage at all, it's all indoor.
The two egresses?
No, just, just one, there's four movement, it's about 150 feet from the...
Where's the traffic light?
Traffic lights, right here.
Do we have blueprints for this? Oh, I don't know. Oh, he did say, all right, just... Questions from the board members, please?
If the, do you have enough land there, if that was not what lands, would you have enough land to put in the parking spaces?
No, we could probably add another 17 spaces, so it'd be, it'd still be short.
Peter?
What's your hardship?
Um, I mean...
I guess I'm missing, you just want more space, so I am not saying that...
Well, I mean, I mean, our hardship, I mean, is the property itself, it's, and it's the fact that it's a sear pavement that's unnecessary, you know, O'Reilly's doesn't really, doesn't really need it, but yeah, it is the shape of property and the size, the property is about an acre, a little less than an acre.
But the, so there's no requirement that you want to have that number of spots, there's just the company on set?
It's, it's just a prototypical, yes.
That wouldn't be a hardship?
No, 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 I guess, I mean, I don't know if the town wants to see that either, but yeah, we could...
And the, we call it the bylaw.
Yes, right, right, I can give it for that, so, okay.
So, we said, so we could, so you can or cannot fit 73 spaces?
73 spaces would not be feasible.
You would have an help, because then instead of...
But they don't need that many spaces, you might want to acquire a...
He doesn't have, he doesn't have...
Right.
The only way you'd have is to go inside.
So, let me ask you this, the only way to put 73 parking spaces in there would be to reduce the size of the building?
Even 3,000, yeah, I mean, you could do that, or you're getting a little disturbed, going deeper into the wetland, but...
Like, the, one of the reasons I ask is for the loading space, the bylaw... The, the bylaw specifically says for both access and maneuvering area. So for the loading space, you're, you're shrinking that down, it looks like, from twenty, twenty point five feet to thirty-five feet from what we require, which is ten feet wide. And, and that we're gonna maneuver and create issues back.
And a short of fifty feet.
And I don't know what the hardship would be that you would need that other than you don't want to put it in a different space on that lot, because it would fit somewhere else on that lot and conform, you just don't.
I mean, we, we could remove another space and go to thirty-three parking spaces and satisfy the forty-five length we need, if, if the board is okay with that.
And I, from our perspective, and I'm just speaking for myself, but I think that the intent is that you meet the bylaws unless you have a substantial hardship, and then that's what we're here for, to grant that hard, that variance, because you can't do that, not because you want to do that.
Right. The size of lot does not allow for seventy-three parking spaces.
You don't need seventy-three parking spaces.
We don't need seventy-three, no.
Right.
Right.
The company wants it. And, and, and one of the reasons I ask is I don't know why you would need seventy-three parking spaces for an auto parts store, and I, I'm slightly concerned in the back of that. I don't know what's gonna be parking back there all the time.
Right, I, I.
Which is, which has nothing to do with the hardship running. Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just asking the question because we're supposed to protect another bylaws, and we, and the state requires us to have hardship to do that.
Okay. I mean. I'm not sure, I'm not, I mean, the, the, we can't, we can be able to accommodate seventy-three. That's why we're coming to you for this variance. I, I understand the, the hardship, I mean, the lot size doesn't matter in that case. And even if we went down to three thousand square foot, I mean, even sixty spaces is a lot. The one per one hundred square feet is, is kind of strange. I mean, typical commercial of this size is one per two hundred, roughly around there. Or one per two fifty, sometimes, sometimes that, so.
Well, was the practice of the board too, when we were doing, reviewing the Walmart, that, that required an incredible amount of asphalt. And, you know, as far as, you know, they, they had come up with a, with a different proposal to where they used parking space in the back, which is the grass area that could be used as parking space if you had to, but nevertheless, the runoff was also a big concern. Now, how, how is the, the delivery trailer gonna maneuver once, once it, it's gonna pull in straight and then back out?
So it, it does this, it pulls in as a K-jerk, and it does it, that's a typical maneuver that they do for O'Reilly's.
You'll have to explain that to me, I don't know what that is.
Yeah, it'll come in and then pull in here, and then tilt into, till those space. Typically, their, their concrete pad is a lot smaller than this, because again, their, their back wheelbase is what's typically on the loading space itself. And then, and then when they're done, it just comes up as a pedestal. And this, and that usually happens without any interruption of parking spaces in the area.
Gentlemen, any other questions from board members before I open it up? Have any comments, questions from anybody in the audience regarding the property? Seeing none. What is this, this, the structure to the left at the loading area there, the small, smaller square?
Oh, this is the receptacle area, it's a dumpster pad, which is enclosed by a wall on the fence. Yeah.
So does the property continue to the rear of the building only, only as wetlands?
Uh, it, it ends here.
Oh, ends there.
And this is all wetlands here. There's a, there's a portion, a small portion here and a small portion here that is on the property that's actual wetlands. And we're, we're currently through that process of wetlands, we have one more hearing this week, but it was generally well received at, at wetlands. And planning zoning, we, we got a trubal last week with obviously some conditions, and that went through three, three hearings, mainly because the stormwater quality was such an important aspect, and we wanted to make sure that we were not increasing the volume or peak discharge rate runoff to the neighboring properties, because there is, there's a couple neighbors, there's a neighbor down here, she's here today, I do, that has flooding issues from, from the bank property, and she just didn't want us to, you know, contribute to that, so.
Have you addressed that issue?
Yes, we did, and planning is on board with, with our design as well.
What do you have for frontage, by the way, on one oh six?
So, um.
One hundred and one? One hundred and one feet.
So is, is this the lot? We turned on before, because the size.
People are trying to create a commercial space.
Could you double check that? I think that's not correct, is it? A hundred feet front?
What's required on commercial?
This is, this is thirty, and three of these would be ninety, uh, yeah, ninety, so yeah, it's pretty, it's, it's one hundred. And that's at this point right here, where, where it's, where it's going to turn to.
Rob, if I could, what's the requirement on the frontage for?
One sixty-two.
For business on one oh six? Is it a hundred and fifty feet or is it a hundred?
Hundred and fifty.
I'm sorry?
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty?
Oh, my bad. Sorry, I was reading, I was reading, I was reading, um, we're one sixty-two. Yeah, sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A hardship, can we even entertain the request? That's like the town council.
I can certainly ask Amy that. I think.
No, no.
You can entertain it, I just don't know if granted is there.
Can we grant it is the question? That's what I mean.
Amy, does they have to prove for hardship on, for the variance?
So under one sixty-seven twenty-one, twenty-one, A three, is variances, and you may authorize a variance only in cases where owing to conditions, especially with such a parcel and such building, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the chapter would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to be a pellant. And further, that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of this chapter. So it's exact, it's, it's pretty much word for word as forty A, section ten.
So as far as fulfilling that requirement for, for the hardship, the topography and layout, where, does that qualify or is?
Doesn't appear that the wetlands are impacting, because it's up there offsite. And going, going to a pure point, it's the size of the building that's, that's generating that in the parking spaces, so they could reduce the size of the building, I suppose.
Well, and it, I don't know if there's a requirement that we have a certain number of spaces for that.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's one per.
One per two hundred square feet, right?
One per one hundred square feet.
Is it one hundred or two hundred?
I have a hundred.
One hundred.
There's a hundred. Hundred?
Yeah, so it's very, very strict.
So it's one space for each one hundred square feet or fraction thereof, a floor area of any retail, which is like this, and then it goes on for other. And then, or one space for each one hundred and seventy-five square feet, if forty-five percent of the lot is left as green space. Is that possible?
It is not, no. And I think, I think this area, I think we did the calculation, and it's, it's still like sixty-something spaces, so there wasn't that much of a reduction.
Yikes.
They're asking, the request is for thirty-four parking spaces down from the required seventy-three.
The law asks for sixty-six, we're way out of there right now. They're not gonna be able to fill it. They'll never fill that parking.
That's right. Not without reducing the size of the building.
Right. You never fill that parking lot.
No, it's, at the peak hour, it's about fourteen. We've done several parking studies for O'Reilly's, and it's, it's about fourteen parking spaces in the peak hour.
If you look around with all the different auto parts store, they're never.
That's my.
It's not like a restaurant or a Walmart. That's the, that's the problem.
But the hardship is the size of the building that they're building.
Yeah, it's, you know, no one hears it.
Well, it was clear, it wasn't the, Mr. Andrews?
Yeah, for Campbell six eighty Columbus Street. Did you say it was three thousand square feet of retail space?
The customer area is three thousand square feet, correct. Again, one per one hundred, that's, that's, yeah, it's thirty spaces, so if, if, but the, I mean, the problem is the regs do say square footage of retail, so if the regs just want to go with retail space as the customer area, then, then we would be under the requirement.
Oh, I see, so using the L space strictly for part storage, that type of?
It's all storage, and no customers are in the back, so yeah, it's, yeah, three, and it's, the three thousand square feet is above here. So there's an L shape of all, of storage that customers can't use.
So the three thousand square feet is all shelving, and so you can.
Yeah, and that, and a bathroom location.
Right. Open for the property.
Right, yeah, you have to actually request to go in the back for that.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Jerry, you look like you had a question.
Well, I'm just saying, do we consider just the retail space?
What do you think, Amy? If you don't mind me putting you on the spot like this.
That's fine. Unfortunately, it does not limit to just retail space, which I have seen parking bylaws that do that. They will limit it only to areas where the customer is allowed. Here it says one space for each one hundred square feet or fraction thereof, a floor area of any retail, wholesale, service establishment, office, or professional building, and that's it. That's all it says.
And I've just seen so many parking lots that are, that are empty, that are just paved over, that there is nothing that's being used.
And I do think, as the butters said, and I do know that there's been drainage problems from runoff and whatnot from the bank and whatnot have caused havoc with the.
Exactly.
With the properties back there, so the, the more, the more asphalt, of course, the more runoff you're gonna have.
Exactly.
So you'd almost be adding to the problem, which was, again, a, a big concern with the Walmart too, with the butters going around with the, with the runoff going into the, into the other neighborhoods. Okay?
How many total spots in there?
Total?
Right.
Thirty-four?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, seventeen in the front, and which are conforming size, and then seventy on the side.
Mr. Andrews, if you don't mind me putting you on the spot with, with the planning board, how, how do they feel about the retail space versus the, the other, if you don't mind me putting you on the spot like that?
Um, the problem is, it doesn't really specify. We did attempt to mitigate that a little bit with the green space, but it really requires a lot of parking spaces for what we have.
Thank you. What, what did you say that was for green space? Anything at all?
Um, I mean, there's, there's strip along here, there's the detention basin, which, I mean, if green space is free.
Is that asphalt or is it?
No, this is all, this is all landscape. There's a wetland seed mix that goes in, I know the wetland seed mix out going in here, because this will be inundated with water for like eleven hours, and then it'll recharge into the ground. And then this, this is all, all lawn area on the side. And in the front too, we have, we have kind of a, I think it's thirty, a little more than thirty feet of lawn in the front as well. But there's, there's some shrubs, and where the sign is, we've got shrubs and bushes. I can actually bring out the wetland seed.
So what's the size of the lot?
It's a point nine, point ninety-seven.
So the, the argument that someone could make is that the town does not want a building of that size on a lot that small, which is why they have the requirements in parking that they do, and the requirements to the, the variance. So the, the issue of the size of the building being a hardship may be the actual intent of the bylaws, that they don't want a three thousand square foot building, that you wouldn't be able to arguably do the three thousand square foot home, and want to resize that lot for small.
Now, you did have that property, and you had O'Reilly's Auto Parts, and you put seventy-three, seventy-three parking spaces, would the town really want that either? Is that like an ideal condition as well? I know, I know that it goes per.
Well, arguably couldn't do it, right?
No, but, no, but if we, if we did have a bigger, a bigger lot.
It would be different, right?
Right, and would you want seventy-three parking spaces for this area?
That, that's the trade-off right there.
Right.
What's that? Yes, sir.
In fact, I just made a comment.
Your name, sir?
About Tom Lewis, with fifty-seven South Street. Just a little historical perspective, that hundred parking spots.
Jesus Christ.
For that, one per hundred square feet, was really an attempt to preclude big box stores. It was specifically in there to try to minimize, but it had nothing to do with the size of the building so much, it really was trying to be a detriment to big box stores. It was a deeper of Walmart, and that's what kind of prompted that whole change to the one per hundred square feet, just to give you a little historical perspective.
And again, too, we had other buildings to tell, who used to be Allied Auto Parts down there.
The ten line five.
Yeah, exactly, they, you know, again, like you said, the, the trade-off. Well, what is the pleasure of the board? Could have them, I mean, as far as site inspection goes, are we just looking at open, open land there? But the way, the way I look at it is it, it's either back, consider the, the retail space of, you know, the thirty-two hundred as offset by the, the green space, and then we'll go back to the drawing board and come back with a smaller building.
Well, my concern is that we can't, we can't consider a hardship. You know, that's my concern. Your point about the drainage is an excellent point. I think they did a great job with that, don't get me wrong, I'm not, it's a terrific job. You know, you're trying to put, you know, ten pounds of stuff into a five pound can, you know, but I wish the bylaws said, you know, the, the, the square foot is the public uses, should dictate how much parking you need, because obviously, a, a large part of this is storage. You don't need parking for storage. So we're just in a conundrum where I think, I think our hands are tied almost.
Well, if.
Without going back to drawing.
You know, as far as that hardship was addressed, does anybody on the board feel that it's a, it's a detriment to the intent of the bylaw?
In this case, would we consider the warehouse a hardship, because they have the cars for the.
That is the type of business that it is.
Yeah, that's just the business that it is. I mean, I cannot picture seventy-three cars in that parking lot in their lifetime. They could have, they could give, free giveaways, and I don't think we'd see seventy-three cars there.
And that's all we'd have is asphalt.
Exactly. And I think, again, the more asphalt is, certainly gonna cause more of a problem on the runoff.
So that would come under the, being detriment to the, to the character of the whole neighborhood, you know, that whole business area.
Spaces in there.
What do you think?
I don't think it's detrimental, like having more asphalt would be.
I don't think it's detrimental, like having more asphalt would be. Definitely.
What?
I would say seven thousand square foot retail facility.
Well, it's, just the size of the whole entire building is seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five square feet, because it's a retail business.
Right. I mean, is there, is there another example of a building this size on a lot like that in town?
In town?
What is the old Allied to rescue?
I mean, the...
I don't, I don't, I don't know how big this building is.
Well, how big was that Allied lot down there on Indian Path and one oh six?
That's a small lot.
That's, it's, it's not an acre.
I guess, my question is how big the building is, right? So like, how big is comparatively, how big are the other buildings in town that don't have the number of parking spaces? Because I, I think the, part of the intent of the bylaw might have been a seven thousand square foot building on an acre lot, which isn't necessarily common.
Yeah, I, I know where you're coming from. I mean, all seasons restaurants, similar size. That looks something like, I mean, especially for restaurants, retails, I think restaurants more.
All the Dunkin' Donuts, that's a good size.
Yeah, this, this, this tavern is, I mean, has more parking than we have probably, because as a rear, but it's probably still underparked as well.
Yeah, it's hard to compare the two businesses.
I'm not sure the actual size, it's just from the area, so they do what...
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, I'm kind of putting out, I'm sorry. And part of the reason I ask is I am not entirely sure what that building would compare to in town.
Right.
If seven, like, if it's, I have no idea square footage of like Walmart, I have no idea what that is. I assume it's way more than seven thousand.
Yeah, it's about, the small ones are about a hundred and two thousand, something like that, hundred and six, so that's a true...
How big is your building, Kasai?
Four thousand square feet.
Four thousand? Yes, your name, please?
Hey, this is Daniel Saya. I was just wondering, when I looked at Dunkin' Donuts, that Dunkin' Donuts, how many spaces? And how big is that? How many space parking spaces for that? Is that similar in any way? Or is that different because it's a restaurant?
I think this is much bigger than the Dunkin' Donuts one.
Yeah.
I thought maybe because of the other stores that were in that lot.
But I mean, I think a restaurant use is definitely a different generation.
It's per table, and per table and per...
Oh, so it's a different formula how they figure out the parking spaces with a restaurant versus a retail business?
Okay, I just thought maybe because of the other two, or is it one store that's in there as well? I didn't know if it was helped in this situation.
That's true.
Continue, is there any value?
For what reason?
Because of the size of the building, right?
I'm sorry?
The problem is the size of the building.
Yeah. Or, yeah.
What are the other buildings that O'Reilly has? Are they the same size, or...
This is actually the smallest, yeah.
This is the small.
Prototypical.
Have you figured out what the breakout would be, how small you would have to go to give you enough room to have enough parking lots? You must have figured out the breakout, that the smaller you make the building, the more parking spots you have. Do you know what that number is?
Um, I think, to be honest, like, you only get another row down here, because you need the drive-by. And that's probably, probably get around fourteen spaces, and that would cut into the building, or maybe, maybe twelve spaces, and that would cut into the building. Probably around ten feet, fifteen feet.
But then you need less parking spaces. What I'm saying is, what's the, what's the breakout, where you reduce the size of the building to give you enough room to have enough parking spots?
So, I mean, let's say you get at twelve, we have three hundred pounds, we have thirty-four, so four, forty-six. You'd have to get down, you'd have to reduce it by three thousand square feet.
So we're almost cutting it in half, to be able to have the appropriate number of parking spots.
Right. Yeah, seventy-three, we have thirty-four, so, yeah.
Well, we can only vote on, on, on what's before us, you know, so what's the pleasure of the board? It, it, does it, I mean, you mentioned a continuance, I don't know what we would, we would benefit, or how it would change if it, if it continued, we continue it. Yes, sir.
Just have a question, David Montzio, ten thousand, about sixteen thousand dollars. The reason that I love this town and why I came here is because it's a small hometown feel. Is there, is there a way that this building's gonna look and fit with the town? Are we gonna have it just like a metal warehouse in, you know, O'Reilly's on top?
It, I mean, it has, it has a like tone tan coloring. And it, the, the front, if you ever seen it, it has an O'Reilly's entranceway, but...
I'm familiar with this.
Yeah, so it's, it's a, it's like, it's a white, whitish offset, white.
Because the point they're trying to make is that, you're taking this big thing, you're trying to stop on a postage, postage stamp, and you're asking for less parking spaces than what is required by the bylaws. I think for me and the rest of the residents in the town would appreciate less asphalt, because it is a hometown feel, okay? But definitely for the butters, so that they don't get any more, you know, flooding or whatever it is it might be. But, you know, I think primarily what I would want to see, because I drive by the farm stand, you know, it's open land, and it's, it's hometown. But again, if you pull into Walmart, there's miles of asphalt that even during the Christmas season don't get used. And it's, it's a waste of space. So putting in the extra green versus parking spaces.
Right. And, and we are decorating the front, there's a couple trees in the, in the entranceway here, we're decorating with shrubs, spaced out with mulch bed.
Are those indicated on the plan?
They are in the landscape, and we've got a diagram. So in this corner by the driveway, sorry, I'm not going to give our attention, sorry, I don't have any... We have a red vehicle. In this side, we have... Of course, the same foil, I, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not familiar with that. So that's shrubs and grasses, and then in the back, we're putting some swamp white oats.
How close to the building can they lie, or is it...
Um, there's, oh, from the closest of ours?
Yeah, it's the bank, that, that building, the, the farms.
Right, and we're, and we're on the side of the farm side, as opposed to the bank side.
What about for store rooms, after store...
Um, we have, we have it in this area here, up at the side, not, again, towards the farm side, and the residential side.
What do you think, gentlemen?
I just got one last question for you. I can't do it right now, but if you could total up the total square feet of green space you have there?
Um, off the top of my head, I don't...
Yeah, I'm just wondering how close you are to forty-five percent. I'm just looking at the drawing right here. And you seem to have, you have thirty feet on one side, you got, what's it, twenty feet in the back, you've got another thirty feet up front. Doesn't matter, you're not using it, you're not using it. And you get space on the side too. I mean, looking at it, you know, it's, I'm not gonna say that you got forty-five percent, but it would be something to look at. Because if you are reconsidering of making the building a little bit smaller, if you can get into that forty-five percent, that might work. And it seems like our hands are tied right at the moment.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I guess, I guess mine...
I'm just trying to help you.
I know. Unfortunately, I, I don't know if they have any, like, prototypical, really small, and, I mean, I can definitely ask, but it's probably going to be...
Okay, well, gentlemen, while we'll entertain a motion, anybody on the board like to make a motion regarding petition number eight ninety-four as presented?
Wait, the on-site?
We could do that, yeah?
I'll make a motion to waive the on-site.
Some motion to waive the on-site, is everybody have a second?
Second.
Call for a voice vote. Jerry?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Peter?
Yes.
And Kasai? So waive the on-site, don't, really isn't necessary to look at an empty field. Okay, well, regarding the petition, what's the pleasure of the board? Yes, Mr. Gettys.
What is the typical evaluation of what the store will bring in for tax revenue? So if we bring up the, the change of the bylaw, what would we be looking at for revenue to the town?
Honestly, I'm, I'm not sure of that. I can definitely ask my client on that. And get you guys...
I would just respond to a question like that, and I think you phrased it better than I could. The, the question is always gonna be, we could bring in a ton of tax revenue. The question is, how, how much does a one oh six of buildings that are seventy-two hundred square feet change the town? And I think that bylaws arguably are trying to protect the town from changing that way, and that might be specifically why. And it might be a matter of size of the lots required for buildings like that, which they, it doesn't seem like, in my opinion, that they necessarily have at this point. I, I would be open, I know we're, it's pretty cut and dry as to what we're looking at. I don't know if there's a whole lot of change from what's currently presented, but I, I, we might benefit from continuing this and giving them some options to either A, come up with some, some similar situations in town that are like that, because I don't necessarily know what a seventy-two hundred square foot building looks like, or something that would look like that. Or if they can look at making that building smaller to fit in with the expectations that we have as a town, and what that would look like for you guys. I mean, I, I want tax revenue in the town like everybody else does. Because if they don't, they don't pay what we've had, so I'm open to that. But at the same time, I, I think that we could, I think that you guys could work a little bit to try and fit that building into the expectation we have for the town, so. I don't know how anybody else feels, and we can talk about that, but...
Who would like to make a motion then?
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion to continue petition eight ninety-four until, when our next meeting is our calendar there.
Till next month?
Yeah, till May, it's in March. So, sixth, May sixth?
May sixth.
I'll second.
There's a motion on the floor to continue this, to give the applicant an opportunity to revise his, his application. So there's a motion on the floor, then there's a second. Well, all right, I'm gonna ask for a voice vote. Jerry to continue the, continue till next, well?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Kasai? And I vote yes also. So it's the board's vote that we continue this for next month? And we're in hopes that you'd be able to revise your building size and application to, to fit more along the lines of what the concerns are of the board. Okay?
I will definitely modify the plan.
Great. Thank you, sir. Yeah, why don't we take a quick five-minute break, please? Uh, we're gonna petition eight nine zero. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, March eleventh of two thousand nineteen, at seven twenty-five PM, in meeting number one of Town Hall, four ninety-nine Flimmer Street, Halifax, Mass, on the application by George S. Tebow for a special permit or variance to quote, "refine the existing operations," unquote, "located at two eighty South Street in Halifax, Mass." Said property is owned by Richard M. Merley, as shown on Sis's map one oh two, lot five dash zero, title reference book three, four, five, six, four, page seventy-one. The applicant seeks a general law, chapter forty-eight, section six finding, special permit, variance, and/or all such relief to enable the change, extension, or alteration of the existing uses of the approximately thirty-six point five acres of property to include the acceptance, processing, including operation of wood drying, kiln technology, sawing, composting, and mulching, storage and sale of organic, agricultural lumber, forestry, and related products in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under section one sixty-seven, seven, and eight, and twenty-one. Area is zone residential, petition number eight nine zero.
Good evening. I'm Phil Almsberger. I'm going to deal with George Cass and Keyboy, and everyone on the phone, and Joe. We're also with George's, George's parents, George Wesley here, and Rick Merley and his lawyer, Susan Piri is here also. Of course, Joe Webby. Just two things of clarification since the last meeting, which we had. One of the things that I'll take, I'll take responsibility, being too verbose in the application. There's no intention of doing composting. I filed a letter, in other words, with the data. That was never the intention of this. And basically, what we're looking to do is to modernize, you know, existing farming and agricultural uses there. And one of the components of that is, is new technology for, for sawing lumber, and also for kiln drying. I made, George got a copy of that, just so you can kind of visualize, these are pretty compact things that you have. We're just so long we're talking about this, we can kind of visualize what they are, and it's pretty amazing, the technology of what they've got to these days. But for right now, then I'll talk, we'll turn this over to Joe, and he'll tell you what he's been up to since the last time.
Yes? Yes, sir?
Hi, Joe Webby, Webby in the area.
Hi, Mr. Webby, how have you been? Haven't seen you in a while.
Last time we were here, the only plan that I had at the time was a two thousand and six plan, before Dick early, early did any development at all. Since that date, we have, have the weapons redelined, and we've located the existing buildings, and we've also done park tests. It's been witnessed by the board of health. I would like to submit some plans if I may. I have plenty of plans.
You good?
Yeah, we're good.
Yep. That's fine, Mr. Webby, thank you.
Basically, what we've done is, we've located all the improvements in the upland area, and immediately about South Street. Currently, there's a string of greenhouses, another greenhouse, a live garage, and then they have a mobile office and a couple other old buildings. Basically, as I understand from, from George, his intention is to utilize all these buildings that are there and continue the greenhouse use, the agricultural use. We did get a suitable perk in this area that was witnessed by the board of health. We have not created a separate design yet. We do have sufficient soils for, for certain uses.
Okay?
If I can just clarify, trying not to repeat any, I don't want to repeat too much, but the, the petition here isn't to build, to build anything new or do anything in here. Basically, George talked a little about his forestry, about the kiln and the, and the portable mill here, or those inside of buildings. So what you have, and one of the issues that we're faced with is, as I said, as soon as you know, we have the agriculture, we're gonna file for a forestry permit, but you're supposed to own the property first. And we're waiting for, for, hopefully, receiving the commission from the board here. But, so he's not looking to build anything and do anything new, he's basically looking to modernize what's going on here. In addition to that, there's, George is, George is in the forestry business, and a lot of those other coal forests. There's a real need, and particularly environmentally, to use, use the whole tree. And that's what, and that's what they're looking to do. Oftentimes, as George is telling me, there's no place to go, they just grind good lumber into, into wood chips. into, into woodchips. And so he, he feels there's a real need in the area, is consistent with the agricultural, agricultural use. And you can see there's a lot of high level weapons soils, yes, he is gonna have a plan to do with this, but under consideration by law, and also under the state bylaws, we respect the buffer zones and all the weapons, not cutting any of the timber that's in there. So we have to grow the timber, so consequently, he needs to bring in lumber that he's found from his own jobs and also from the other jobs. And George, you want to tell him a little more about the technology of these big trees?
Well, I'm more interested in where the, where's the wood coming from? Where is this all, this all being trucked in? Is this? And, and what do you contract with the, just so I understand it myself?
Yes, I also remove trees from people's yards from their house, and salvage trees that would be basically ground for left in the hoods.
Now, these are, are these just, just my own purpose? Because I was just reviewing the last meeting, I wasn't able to attend it. But now, are you contracting with other tree companies for their lumber that are bringing them in? When you said you have a bunch of different places, is this all your work? The trees that you take down and that you're, you're man, you're milling?
Yes.
Or do you have all the?
My trees, and I'm gonna be repurposing other trees which would have been left behind.
From other tree companies?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if it was just your work or?
I just wanna basically make use of something that's gonna be thrown away, repurpose, repurpose it, and, you know, have many people enjoy what, you know, is there.
As far as, not to interrupt you, but as far as many people, how many other companies are you talking about that will be bringing lumber into your, onto the property? When you said you, you know, you contacting other contractors, bring their wood in, the fallen trees, how many are you talking? I have no, trying to get an idea.
Yeah, just a couple, couple companies. It's like, I don't know what kind of, it's not gonna be like a massive lumber that you see in Oregon, it's gonna be very small, and just.
Now, do you contract with these people, or they just know you have a facility and that's how, how does that work? I don't.
Yeah, there is no, I have a facility, and instead of, you know, I'm starting, they will bring them to me, and I can repurpose them.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you, but I just didn't, wasn't clear myself on that.
Yeah, so the sawmillies, the Fisher sawmillies in front of you, that's very, very quiet, swoop and pop like this around it. The kiln makes no noise, and it's being, it's, the kiln, you can basically use the lumber in two to three years after, that's about sixty-eight percent.
Sixty-eight percent?
More than you're talking. So you can bring things to your house, and it's useful, or, you know, you can prangle it, you can do whatever you want with it.
And this, this would be stored on the property until somebody buys it, as in retail, or as in like a lumber yard?
Well, no, fingers up. One of the things, as I said, we're also, we are in a residential zone, that's why we're gonna be keeping all the trees, not building other buildings. Obviously, I know for safety conditions, a couple things, if we're, if we're, if we're moving, we won't talk on hours of operation, but also, the intention is, it's just a wholesale operation, so it's not mom and pop coming in fast for a few pieces of lumber. This is, this is like, you know, if there's a, someone's building a house, or someone's building an addition, or a, or, you know, a lumber company, they're the ones that are gonna utilize lumber. In addition to that, there's all, all the greenhouses, all the agriculture, whether it's flowers, vegetables, all that, probably outside agriculture also, but that also is on a wholesale basis. We're not proposing that people are coming in as one of the other establishments in town. Amongst other things, George said last, and George is very much looking to be a good part of the community, and to work with all the other businesses and all the, and all the residents. He can talk a little about, you know, tends to have internships for high school, for local high school kids. He's very active with the scouts, he's done in his hometown presently, in my, she did a lot of work with that, which he can talk about. And he's been in the forestry business, he's a fire jumper out west, and he just came back, he just, he and Cassie just came back home, be closer to the, closer to the folks. And so this is a long, long-term situation. Also, he's fortunate enough, and you know, he had Dick is gonna continue on and help show George and Rob, introduce him to a lot of the local, local people and businesses and things along those lines. So George is, you know, fortunate in that aspect, that, you know, Dick is gonna give him a hand to, you know, help him fit in well with this. But one of the points, one of the, I said, the, this really is a forestry, you know, agricultural, horticultural thing, that the, these two, the kiln and the mill are very small, considering the amount of area we're gonna use this, considering all the existing buildings and whatever. And one of the things that, we're gonna stick, stick the kiln and the mill inside, so in other words, they're out of the weather. Obviously, we gotta go through all the, you know, building, fire, all those things, and, you know, George is gonna bring in water from the street, and there is gas on the street already.
All right, how many buildings do we have on the property?
And Joe? Let's see, this, I believe, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven greenhouses, a big green barn, another storage building, and then a, it's basically an office trailer. Seven, ten.
Ten?
There's a couple of, obviously, there's sheds.
Well, how many couple of sheds do we do, just to? Now, Rob, if I'm not mistaken, the, the greenhouses themselves, they don't count as structures with them, how does that work?
I'm assuming they're been there for a while, and I haven't been out to the property, so I couldn't tell you. Plastic, I don't like it out.
They're plastic.
They're plastic, so I think probably just greenhouses.
Just a temporary structure. I got six of them on property, and they're just a temporary structure.
And they, and they've all been permitted over the years and everything?
I haven't seen anything since I had my office. But if they came in for what, I don't see anything that indicates anything.
What was the bond and stuff that they're referring to, was that all pre-existing in this?
Again, I don't know what's on the property, and the flash is not showing anything. We did have some electric going in there, was there a meter in there, Joe?
There's, yeah, there's electricity and there's gas, each one of the three.
As far as I can see, there's, there's permits for gas, there's permits for electricity. I don't see any, any, any structure within the whole.
As far as, as far as the, the permitting goes, what was it, the original one, Rob, was it, was it like a, a shed or something, or it was a quantum hot or something to that effect? I don't understand what, what was the original permit for?
I don't have an original one, so I'm telling, I have a permit for a trailer that was granted.
A trailer, is that what you said?
Other than that?
As in like an office trailer?
I'm assuming it's an office construction type of trailer.
When were all these buildings built?
Trailer is an office, it's an incidental construction.
My name?
Wait, hold on. Yes, sir, your name, please?
My name is Jake Merly. That's sixty-one A, and sixty-one A, anything under four thousand square feet, you don't need a permit for. Am I right?
I don't think you need to go, you exempt, but I think you should be a builder.
Well, the following building inspector was found, and he told me I didn't do it.
So again, I don't know what's up there, I'm basing it on greenhouses.
Yeah, the greenhouses, you know, they're temporary, they're not a picture, human.
Okay, I was just curious where they all came from, I didn't even know they were there. Okay.
But just to add, this one of the last meeting is, you know, the intention is, as I said, isn't to cut trees or clear trees or put any other buildings or greenhouses or structures, just to continue the agricultural, horticultural uses, to process to wood, as we have been set. There is no composting, I put up, I put up a heading to make sure, there's no confusion along those lines. But, you know, we think it's, I think it's something that's really needed in the community as far as people who do forestry work, so I think it fits, and it's a lot with that. George, does he know the school far, he studied that, this is, he and Cassie, they're all in, see the future, this isn't a immediate deal, this is still retirement. And what really looked, asked for is just a determination that, the property is, just a clarification, the property is already under sixty-one A, and that's one of the things the use isn't changing, so it's gonna stay, it's gonna stay the same as what it is. But we just need a determination from this board that the only modernization that we're doing here is, we're gonna be drying some lumber, and Dick has a sawmill, we have a kind of state-of-the-art sawmill that's actually a better situation, it's silent and it's good. So, but we also acknowledge exactly, you do a forestry plan, but we are bringing, which I believe within the agricultural, horticult, or horticultural forestry, we are bringing in some of the logs that George has from his jobs, plus for some of the other guys have some logs, he's gonna process those. So he's gonna use everything, he's not gonna chip good wood into, into woodchips. So in essence, what we'd like is a determination from the board, that the board agrees that, you know, this is a farming operation, and what we've discussed within that, and I also indicated that, you know, we're only looking for, it's a wholesale operation, this isn't a retail operation, we're not looking, we're gonna continue to grow in the greenhouses, and hopefully, do some exterior growing, horticultural stuff also.
Hold on one second. Members of the board, you were pretty much, just meaning.
You mentioned that you're gonna grow your own trees. You're not gonna cut anything down, this there or down, you're gonna plant. What is the life cycle of, how long does it take, from planting to where you're gonna cut it down and, and use it?
All depends on species, sort of like.
Just a rough idea, I'm not, I'm not trying to pin you down. Are we talking ten years, five, fifteen years, twenty years?
Say thirteen, twenty.
Fifteen and twenty. So basically, you're gonna be trucking in all this lumber, all those trees, for the next fifteen, twenty years before you start harvesting, you know? I'm just getting an idea of the, the cycle that you're doing, okay?
Just repurposing local forest, that would.
No, you've mentioned, we made that clear, I just wanted to make sure what the timeframe was, how long before you could actually use what's on your site?
Gentlemen, any questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir.
I think the determination, Mr. Chairman, of whether this is a conforming and non-conforming use is, talking about the mill and the kiln, I think that's the zoning enforcement officer's responsibility, not ours. So we shouldn't be being asked what the determination is, am I correct about that? That's, that's the zoning enforcement officers.
To determine what?
To determine whether the use is conforming or not conforming to agricultural use. And then, if it isn't, then it would come to us, and we would start hashing out what we thought about. Am I, am I incorrect in that?
I'd have to refer to the building inspector. Rob, have you made a determination as far as what Dan was just presenting, as far as?
I haven't been asking for a determination, and again, I have to base it on what's their property, and they have to present something to me as in paper, plan, showing me what they're doing.
As far as use of the property?
As far as the use of the property, and again, when they, when they first came in, they were looking for the exception, are we, are we going for section three, are we asking this call of origin, or are we looking for section six, an exception of, of legal use?
What are we doing?
It's section three, and what, what we're asking here is, because although the agricultural use, you see, that, in other words, what I just wanna make sure, what the difference being is what George has, is that there is lumber from off of the property that's being processed, which to a smaller extent has been occurring here, and Dick has a sawmill. And what, what my angle would be, is that we get into the same place, we're asking the board, one of the reasons is that it's kind of a conundrum, in other words, the board making a determination, which we're asking, that's within the agricultural use what we're proposing, because you really can't, and like, in other words, if the board is gonna set reasonable regulations, such as we're already suggesting hours of operation, wholesale operation and all this, it's, it's nearly impossible to go, if you're asked from the zoning enforcement offices, determination, how do you, we don't know what it is that the board of appeals would want, and so you can.
Well, it's your application, it's not our application. What do you want?
Well, that, well, that's exactly what we asked for, and, you know, I defer to Town Council, but I think we get to the same place where we are right now, as to, on determination that basically, under the agricultural, horticultural, and the enabling act, that what we're proposing here is a lot, and if the determination is fine, because to be frank with you, the Tebos aren't gonna put all their life savings in and have, because ultimately, you know, and find out five years from now, if they park housing home here.
Amy, if I could, as far as section three goes, as far as the changing of the use, would this be considered an agricultural use under, under both the state and our own bylaws?
So, under forty-eight, section three, agricultural uses are exempt from zoning. Whether the property's in sixty-one A or not doesn't matter for you guys, sixty-one A is a tax, it's a tax saving, so it has nothing to do with the agricultural use. So, under forty-eight, section three, it is, it's a, it's a fact-specific determination whether they're in an agricultural use or not. One of the things is that there is a provision that the majority of the agricultural use has to occur on the property, and from, from products that were grown on the property.
Forty percent?
It, it's, it's the majority, so it doesn't, there is no actual number. There's also, there's also cases that say that sawmills that bring, when there's lumber brought in from other properties, a sawmill is allowed, provided it's an incidental, it's incidental to an agricultural use. Incidental has been defined as the sawmill can mill wood from that property. There is, Kate, there are a couple cases that say that you cannot bring wood in from other properties. However, there is also a new Superior Court case, which is not binding, that said that because it was all part of a common scheme, they could bring in lumber from other properties. So the state is somewhat all over the place on this. However, here, it appears there's, there's two things. There's the fact that what's going on could be exempt because it's agricultural, and that's your determination based on the facts. But there's also currently a mill on the property being used, and it sounds like that use will be expanded. So that could be considered a section six finding, a special permit under the fact that you have a non-conforming use that will be expanded, perhaps, if that's what you guys find, that it's being expanded. But to do that, you would need to know what the use is currently. You know, currently, it's my understanding, it's a much smaller sawmill, but, you know, is lumber coming in from other properties. If so, we need to make sure that it is truly a non-conforming use, so it has been occurring for a certain amount of time. So it's, it's an extremely fact-specific decision.
Okay, that's pretty cut and dry. What do we have? What's the answer?
The answer is, Dick, you, in other words, if you take this lumber, you don't cut lumber on the property, because some people bring in lumber, they do process and make it a product.
All the lumber that I've used came from Halifax. When they cleaned up the telephone lines, I taped one of the lines, I used that. When the lumber fell down, and we got all the big hurricanes, matter of fact, I still have some up the street, and I still have some more down to River Street. It's all stuff that came down, I've used saw, and made things out of it.
And this has been going for how many years now? What are we talking? Ten, fifteen?
Maybe ten. And I only do it during the winter, I don't do it for summer, because of the greenhouses, it's all local stuff, I mean, there's so much stuff that's being wasted, thrown away.
But it has been brought in from outside the, the property?
So that is the petitioner's burden, to show that it, that it is a non-conforming So, that is the petitioner's burden to show that it, that it is a non-conforming use. It's also the petitioner's burden to show that it's agricultural. So, the other thing is that, under forty-eight, section three, to be classified as agricultural, you have to show receipts of a certain amount of money. And those receipts have to come from products that were grown on the property. So, I didn't see any of that either, but, um, but again, that's, would be for the petitioners to provide.
Well, there's two things. And that's why, even though the property has been used in that manner, you know, the burden because of rights and otherwise and history is to show that, uh, this is a use that was in effect for the past fifty years or whatever, is very, very difficult to do. That's why, under the agricultural exemption, uh, you know, the scheme of what's happening here, George is looking to love loads, bringing, to let the tree company love loads, and trying to service the local, the local folks and the people who have some real need here. So, I think this is a scheme of what you have. Under, and I just had, I think, last time, I did that, under the Agricultural Act, they actually define what it is, but it actually says in here that, sorry, these are just sticking together. Uh, you know, it, it specifically envisions, you know, lumbering operations and forestry. And so, as far as, uh, as far as making a determination of this, I, I would, I would submit that when we're talking about agricultural forestry...
Could you give a copy to Amy, please, again?
Agricultural, or agricultural and forestry, that all the greenhouses and all the sales are gonna happen in Benoit Moles lines, this is just, this isn't just, you know, processing lumber operation, it's a, it's a full-blown agricultural farming. So, I would submit that we have a farming operation, and all we're doing there is modernizing the farming operation, and actually, what we're willing to do is to put some parameters on hours, some parameters that don't presently exist, to actually be more restrictive, i.e. wholesale, wholesale, you know, only use wholesale aspects of this. And so, I think in the, in the whole picture of things, obviously, in farming and everything else, everything's weather and season-related. And so, within the, within the Agricultural Act, you know, George is, George is gonna utilize the greenhouse, he's definitely gonna get in here, he is immediacy, right now, he's a tree business, so he can bring in the log and trees, and where things go from there, something else. The other thing, as I said, with the modernization of these things, uh, there's a real need for local builders and whatever, for good lumber. And George is gonna test the quality of this lumber, just because of the way it's processed is better than stuff you get at the lumber mill.
Yeah, it's not gonna be green, it's gonna be kiln-dried, it's not gonna be grown in plantation, it's gonna be nice that green, better, better than ice cream first before you can find it.
Amy, does that satisfy the use or the fact that an expansion of the, of the current uses? Or the modernization of the current use?
Provided that the current use, that there is, that the current use is, is that, that there is a sawmill on the property, and the sawmill is being used and has been used for over ten years.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Yes, Dan, please, sure.
I'm asking the tough questions, Victor. I see a potential problem, and you don't wanna go down a road where you're stuck in a wanting to use a property, you can't use it the way you wanna use it, and we don't wanna have residents regretting a decision that now they can enjoy their properties, which they have every right to do. In fact, that's paramount in my mind.
I agree.
So, the way I read, it's funny, I'm using one-twenty-eight, one-eight, and the opposite, I, I feel that when you read this, it specifically says that, um, "The grow, the growing and harvesting of forest products upon forest land." And further on down, it says, "Any forest or lumbering operations performed by a farmer who hereby, who hereby defined as one engaged in agricultural farming, as herein defined, or on a farm as incident or in conjunction with such farming operations." So, if he was growing something, and as a result, incident, as a result of that, he had wood to process, then it's farming. If you're bringing in wood, I don't feel it's farming, but then again, that's a determination for the zoning enforcement officer. If he says it's agricultural, we don't have anything to talk about. They have, they can do it by right, am I correct? If he makes a determination that it's not agricultural, which is my personal opinion, but that's his decision, then we have a determination to make of forest, a special permit to what we wanna allow, not a law, correct?
Um, the only thing that I, I would point out is that, um, under forty-eight, section three, which, which refers back to one-twenty-eight, one-eight, that's all under the agricultural exemption. It's my understanding that the mill is, they're requesting a special permit because they want to extend the non-conforming use that's existing.
And the question is, is it?
Or no, I might be wrong.
That, two, two things I should speak to now, what we're, what we're looking to do is to do what the board is comfortable, we're open to get there, but two things I would point out and then just hand out, is two very important. The, the sixth word in this is, it defines farming, it says includes, this isn't an exclusive list, it includes these things. And the second thing, with that incidental, you'll notice, there's a key word there, the word is or, or. So, what I underline is separate and distinct from that. The word isn't and, it's or. So, "Any forestry lumbering operations performed by a farmer," that is included. And then, or, a farm is incident in conjunction with farming operations, that's, that's legislative and construction, is the word or, is the, the rule of law is that or is not superfluous, and means and, or means or. And that's why it says or there, and just a, and I know I've said this a couple times, I'm trying not to be repetitive, but what we're looking at here, this isn't like the property, you saw many logs and that's it. You've already seen, there's ten greenhouse structures, buildings, all of these things are gonna be utilized over the years, and Dick wanted to say something else. Dick's raised cattle there, he's done a boatload of stuff. Dick, did you wanna say something?
Uh, yes, in the town of Halifax, and I know at least six other sawmill. Are they registered with the town? They're taking in lumber, they're selling it, 'cause I've watched them off. I like to, and he's trying to do this legally and bring it in, do something and be a craftsman about it, and all these other people are just...
Dan, you're a little bit more concerned?
Yeah, a little bit more.
Yeah, please.
But I, I really wanna nail this down, I think, I think the more we're doing now, the quicker the process would be in the end. Where is the kiln and the mill gonna be on the property? Where you propose it's going?
It's gonna be inside, it's gonna be inside the buildings.
Which one of the buildings, the barn?
So, the trailers, the one right beside it. So, when we come in, we drive in, we're looking inside.
The corner of that?
Right there.
Okay, so it'd be this one here, is the office? That would be the office, the trailer is the office?
Yep.
Okay, so it's the one right behind it?
Yeah, right beside it.
Okay.
So, now I'm speaking to the fact that we're, we're presenting this, well, the applicant is presenting this to the public, like, we're really not changing anything. That's what I've heard tonight. So, I have some questions about that. Where are you storing the lumber after it's dried?
It's gonna be kiln-dried, and that's gonna be gone.
You're gonna cut to order?
So, are you talking about lumber?
Until, the lumber, until...
The processed lumber.
You mean after, after it's been processed?
Oh, you go right there, the...
Right there in the building? Uh, how many employees, 'cause there are no employees right now, as I understand it. So, that's...
Yes.
I thought it was the last...
President, vice president?
As far as their growth would be concerned, I think they, they mentioned that they were the, they were the principal operators and workers of the, on the site. Eventually, eventually they, they began adding people, and they probably get them from the school.
Well, this is a key point I'm working towards, is the nature of a business is to grow.
Right.
So, with putting in toilets and that type of thing, facilities, you're planning on having employees?
Yes.
Correct? Now, are you gonna be selling to the public, or are you gonna be making deliveries? You know, are you selling on-site or making deliveries? Because as of right now, the mill that's run right now, he uses that wood, if I understand it correctly, for his own products, furniture, that type of stuff, knickknacks.
Baskets.
Baskets, furniture. Uh, so, this is a, this is a stark change, and this is a major change in my mind. So, are people gonna come on to the property to buy it, or are you gonna deliver it to people?
So, wholesale, yeah, both, both of them.
I don't know what the operation is right now, but if you're taking in, obviously, I think I saw seven hundred foot feet a minute, an hour, on the, on the...
Yeah.
I mean, nice off. I won't. So, I mean, I assume you're gonna have some type of forklifts or front-end loaders running, loading things, unloading things, moving, uh, skids of lumber, that type of thing?
Sorry, skid steer, yes.
All right. If you have employees, you need, might need more than one someday, correct?
Maybe.
Okay, well, that would be your goal, I mean, that would be a work request, okay, yeah. And, I'm sorry, your name again, sir? Yeah?
Derek.
Jess told us that he only runs it seasonally, so you're saying you're not changing, is your only, is your plan only to run the mill seasonally? Are you gonna, or no, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, there's a lot of changes. My concern, and I'm sure it would be a tremendous operation, I'm not disparaging you at all, you know, in fact, I commend you for the pro, the way you're coming about. But, so, I'm looking at, you know, the houses in front of it, and over time, you know, right now you might only have one front-end loader. So, you said you had a front-end loader, what was it?
A back, alright, skid steer.
Skid steer. So, it beeps when it backs up, right?
Yeah.
Right, gotta have that, that's, so, you know, you could have multiple eventually, all day long, that could be going on, people are gonna hear it, um, traffic in and out, that's a big change. So, again, if it's agricultural, we kinda don't have a say in it. If it's not, then we can put conditions on it. But, to my concern is, when you try for something like this, and you try to present it as, well, it's the same, we're just gonna modernize it, I don't think that's accurate. You know, obviously you're making changes, and I think it's better that we approach it that way, that this is what you're doing. And so then, 'cause if I was a neighbor, and I went to a meeting and I heard, oh, nothing's changing, we're just gonna put in a quiet room, what do I care? Fine, right? But, if then I find out it's a completely different operation, I have a right to be tipped off, all right? So, I think we just need to make sure that your butters understand what's going on. Sorry, I'm done.
I just need to add for a second, several things. If I use the wrong word to say it's the same, but I'm not sure, it was George, it attempted to be follow-up turn to air, and last meeting, and this meeting itself, I think George has figured exactly what he's pointing, and obviously, intensification is what was more. I would disagree with you, though, is, under the, under the Agricultural Act, reasonable regulation is allowed. So, in other words, one of the aspects of this, that this, that this board can do, is you can set hours of operation, you can set that it's whole-for-wholesale, and those provisions, at the last meeting, as you saw, there were myriad, uh, neighbors here, and their principal concerns were, are we cutting down the forest? What are we doing? This property is, Dick, well, how far, how far off the road till you get to, uh, first of them, it's a few hundred feet, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, even more.
Like four hundred, five hundred feet? And, and there's a, and there's a, yeah, proponent of wetlands and existing vegetation there, but I understand what you're saying, if you have a couple machines and a beeping and whatever, it's, but, you know, whether you have, what, what my words of that is, you know, whether you have a sawmill or you don't have a sawmill, uh, under the Agricultural Act, if you have trucks, you know, you could, you could have, uh, a much more intense truck situation there than this, whether it's a sawmill or not.
You could still have it anyway with the sawmill.
Exactly, exactly. So, so I don't see that there's a differentiation with this, and, and one of the other things, and I know these are just, you know, this isn't something, is I said, George and Cassie ended this, they'd be good neighbors. In other words, that, you know, they want good relationships and friendships with people in Halifax, they're not yet ticking one off. And I think over time, at the last meeting, you heard, everyone of them, the neighbors justified, were concerned about how is this gonna change? I think you saw the consensus, well, everyone's pretty, everyone thought that Dick's running a pretty good operation there, for the time, they really weren't in roaming demand, yeah?
Certainly. Well, well, that's kind of my point, is we understand what, the scope of what a normal agricultural farm can do. They have a broad app, I mean, they can do a lot. We're a right-to-farm community, do we wanna add to that for the neighborhood? So, we're adding something. And just, my own, my only point I'm making here is, I don't, I don't wanna see it presented to the neighbors that, ah, it's the same old thing, we're just gonna modernize it. I didn't think that's disingenuous. I agree with you, but I just wanna be careful not to present it in a certain light to the neighbors. Yeah, a lot of people didn't have a problem because they heard we're not cutting down trees. The other issue, it was nobody's fault, a lot of them were outside, and why I'm going through this again, a lot of the people were outside and weren't told at the time, Bert, you weren't here, remember, they came in like halfway through the meeting? So, I'm going over this again for the people who were outside in the hall, you know, catching everybody up, because it's important to these people.
Yeah.
And I just wanna make sure that we understand it is, in my opinion, um, a stark change, a considerable change.
Well, the, the other thing, that's why I got that letter immediately on the compost, because one of the feedbacks we got in the hall outside is, not in this town, but in close proximity, over in middle borough, they're having problems with composting facility, and as I said, that, that's not something that any house, like, whatever you want, it is, that, you know, there's no over-lying...
So, with the change of the use of the property, down to the crux of the whole matter also, if, if you're gonna be expanding, you're gonna be taking lumber in, there's gonna be an increase in traffic. There'll be, there'll be tractors, trailers coming in, you'll process the wood, they'll be going out, you'll be having wholesalers come in to pick up the product that you've processed, and there'll be traffic going up. It's been a concern of the neighbors in writing to, to the board, that in fact, any, any use of a property can't be detrimental to the established character of the neighborhood. There are diesel fumes, and, and there were early morning pickups, deliveries, 'cause that, I mean, I've worked a lot with tree companies, you know, and they aren't late at night when they're finished up, and they're early in the morning. This, this has to be parameters, there has, these have to be concerns that have to be Even a fence was, was recommended at one point to, to kind of, uh, neutralize some of the, uh, noise problems, emissions and whatnot. I agree, I agree with Dan, this, this is a big change, and it's, it sounds like it's gonna be even a bigger change as, as the years go on, and these problems need to be addressed. This, this is a residential slash agricultural area. It's a, it's not one-oh-six like we saw before, where we have commercial traffic, nineteen thousand daily car counts. This is a, this is South Street, you know? How about any other members of the board? 'Cause you guys must have questions that I certainly wasn't, you know, privy to, or Kasaya?
I think the, the use of sugar will be the same, but it's gonna be increased, and lumber on that property is not gonna be harvested until they produce a sixty-one, uh, sixty-one A status from the, from the government. A site, they come in and they establish the, the whole plant, the, the whole property, and by the time he harvests that, out of that piece of property, it'll be fifteen to twenty... And by the time he harvests that, out of that piece of property, it'll be 15 to 20 years from now. At this point, he has to buy the lumber. Lumber's gonna come in and go up. But to harvest lumber on that property?
Yeah, that's not...
That's not gonna happen, because the trees that are there are sort of small, and it's gonna have 15 to 20 years before he can even cut a log on that property.
Yeah, a few acres doesn't even last, what, a couple of days worth of cutting? I could cut him a couple of days, you know? You know, so...
He has the agricultural, you know, the greenhouses. He has the income from the greenhouses here, income, he'll have income from the tree business. I'm sure he's not gonna do the tree business and the greenhouse business. The greenhouse business is gonna be from March to June. Then, he'll probably be cutting sawmill from June to March.
Yeah, but you said this was gonna be year-round.
He'll cut all year.
I mean, he can cut all year, but I mean, you can only follow one guy. He can't operate both operations and be successful.
Yeah, but that's why you have employees.
Yeah, and then you gotta have more employees.
Which means you gotta cut more lumber, right? You gotta feed the bees.
I mean, he's not gonna be able to cut lumber on that property, that's for sure.
Right.
That's a...
No, process the lumber.
Robert, Jerry, any other questions?
No, I think, I think we've kinda beat this up a bit here. I don't know.
Yeah? Yeah, hold on a sec. As soon as we get through with the board, I'll open it up to the public.
Well, my answer to Ben's question, yeah.
Okay, again, I'll open it up to the public, you have questions, sir?
Hey, you're...
Wait a minute, I'm sorry.
I live actually near the South Street, which is right about here. Most of the people are retired.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't catch your name, Michael.
Owen Graves.
Okay.
Most people are either retired, or their home, your whole day, or about my age, with young kids, we've got four and three of them. I've been here about three years, very busy street. Didn't realize it's hunting today. First thing I did when I moved in, put a nice fence. It's not shocking, because I didn't wanna hide my neighbors, they're worried, like, hiding from us? I says, "No, no." And they let it fence. They're worried about safety of my kids. We've had two deaths up here in three years, that's the traffic. This road over here, this street, it's an island, it's only smooth in the wintertime. I do have a petition here, from as many people as I can, you know, get ahold of, have coffees, 24 signatures, draw the neighbors.
And this petition is, what's your...
Yes, against it. Because now you have noise, you have bad traffic, safety concerns. You have a commercial business here, and by the sounds of it, it's looking to expand, and, you know, a lot of business, a lot of trucks, there's a lot of traffic, a lot of concerns. And you can go on, I mean, you've gotta kill them. I mean, points of interest, while you wouldn't want it. I mean, is the road big enough for these trucks? Is this entry big enough for the trucks? The signs, the speed, I mean, it's residential, it's like a subtle, they say 30, I've never seen it be 30 by me. Smell, from the kiln, you know, the mess, and it's all gonna change from season to season. And yourself, as you said yourself, the first petition of the night, when people looking to expand their house, which everybody's full of expanding their own home, improving it, and doing such things. But, where did that at all, does this increase the value of anybody's home in that neighborhood? Decreases it. And you got safety standards too. I mean, you've got an operation here, you have chemicals, you got machinery, is there a fence around it? What keeps, kids are kids, what keeps them in and out? And then that's a nice sort of neighborhood, the nectar was down. And then, you got all these old buildings, so, once they change hands, and you don't inspect the notes, as such as yourselves, you gotta bring them all up to code. So now, here you are, you gotta bring up the code, water volume, gas, I mean, how many BTUs is your kiln?
It says a right...
Can it handle that? Are they gonna have to rip up this nice street again? There's a lot of that, sprinkler systems, I mean, you're not even gonna get into the street, cut that open, now you've got a good street that's gonna get, you know, torn apart again for commercial use, not, you know, residential use. I don't see anywhere where it benefits enabling, going beyond what it already is. Because, you know, you open that can of worms, once it's there, it's a perfect example. Drive, if you drive through off the VFW property in Rockland, going into Wayman, there's a street, it's all residential. Well, somebody let a commercial business in there, and now everybody's going in, and now there's five commercial businesses in a residential area, and the change in zoning, so it's like, "Well, you did it for him, why can't you do it for us?" And this gentleman back here, he's, you know, small-town people. That's important, that's why I moved out here, I've got some friends that have lived in the neighborhood, well, in the town, for 20 years, so I can, you know, visit in back and forth, I love it here. It's nice, it's quiet, I love my neighbors, they're great people. But adding this, that's, I mean, it might not seem like much, but we live there, you know, you come and go every day, and we're stuck with this, and then excess in flow of traffic, so...
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Yes, sir?
Same lines as you.
Okay, he's already here now. Anybody else, yes, Ross?
Just a couple, I want to give attention to the board, it hasn't been addressed. Again, I haven't seen any information, not that presented to me.
As far as what, Ross?
As far as equipment, as far as where to go, what's gonna, what's the equipment and housing? Again, nothing that I brought before me, but I just want you to be aware, that will be part of the process. We haven't talked about byproduct, byproduct, the kind of, the sawdust, what's gonna happen with the sawdust? Do we have a plan for the sawdust? That's just a question to address to the board. A kiln, I mean, what are we doing for board legs? 12s, 14s, 16s, 20 foot lengths? How big is this, how long is this kiln gonna be? Again, this is equipment stuff, I haven't seen any of this stuff. So, just start with the board, my understanding.
Ross, what about use? How do you feel as a building inspector, about as a change in use?
I think I defer to counsel on that. Again, it's...
She referred to you.
I don't have any facts, all the facts presented.
Right, and that, the burden is on the petition, providing those facts to the building.
That's gonna be required, to get this information to the building inspector.
I just didn't respond, not to, I understand this, there's issues on streets, I understand this, but, and I'm confused. The reason I'm confused, I know how it is a right-to-farm community. All the discussions are going collateral here, there's a reason why there's right-to-farm communities, there's a reason why there's a state-enabling statute, because, under some people's opinions, there should be no farming, a lot of them come off of Massachusetts.
You know, nobody's saying that.
No, well, the gist of it is, you know, the brush is being painted here, is that somehow, you know, having agricultural forestry use here, that somehow is bringing some detriment. I thought Halifax being a right-to-farm community is exactly the type of thing that fits into the community, as of the benefit of other people who work in this industry and related industries. And the point is, from George's and Cassie's standpoint, and again, I'm feeling, well, dismayed, I guess, the best, not the board, but the reaction to this, because we've tried through everything with Dick's thing, but if the community doesn't want us, then tell us, I think it's a real tragedy. But, you know, I don't know what to say. In other words, a young couple who wants to make a living, has a black-and-white forest reuse here, and again, without getting into semantics, we've, at two meetings, we presented all the facts, truthfully and explicitly as we can. If that's something from a board standpoint, that, and again, given to the decision-makers, who say, "We don't want that use," then you can tell us, we won't want the shoes. And I think it's a difficult thing, I know, from Dick's standpoint, Dick's tried very hard to transition this, it works well for Dick, it works well for George, it works well, we think, for the community, but we're not the decision-makers.
And what else in the audience would like to share? Yes, sir, in the back? Oh, I thought you had your hand raised before.
I did not get a chance to sign that petition, nor did my neighbor, I didn't know there was a petition going around. I don't know if two more names would help influence you at all, if they would, we have two more names for you. Couple of questions. The size of the trucks that are gonna be bringing in these laws, the potential damage to the street. We just had that street redone a few years ago, cost the town an awful lot of money. Put big trucks on there with laws, and that does happen from time to time now. When you do a steady stream of trucks coming in with heavy lumber on, going in, coming out, that's not gonna help the street at all. I'm a little concerned about fire. We brought up sawdust, compost, etc. There was a place in Carver that was shut down by the town of Carver, because they were constantly on fire, and the fire department was there, I don't wanna say daily, but I would say probably at least weekly or bi-weekly, because of the fires. This wood, the sawdust, compost sits there and generates heat, and it will catch on fire. What's that gonna do to us? Just a couple more points for you folks to consider.
Okay, let me find, have there ever been any fire issues or anything like that on the property, as far as you know?
Not right now, no.
I had a permit to compost here when I was composting, by the state. In fact, I took all the compost out of the town here when they had to get it out, and by my own expense, we brought it down there and composted. And I had the town coming down there, bringing their leaves and stuff, I was taking that in free. And finally, I went to the thing, and I said, "Gee, you gotta, how about people complaining that somebody's gotta pay for this?" So, I started trying to buy it all or something like, or load it, and a lot of the old people, I didn't check.
Okay, thanks, Dick.
They're maintaining.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I...
Your name, please?
Alina Blackdon.
And where do you...
South Street, map 91, lot 2. I was trying to figure out where this is happening in conjunction with my property. I came a couple of times to see if I could find out that information.
Do you know where her house is in relation to the road? Gentleman with a hat?
Oh, what about, which was it?
Blackdon.
So, where, where, where is South Street?
If there's not a...
Oh, she said what the public wants it to be.
It's left of South Street.
So, this is River Street right now?
Right. Our line's South, South.
South Street, or whatever, you can come out this way. So, if you have a name, it's sort of...
Well, this is number 2, so... Is this part of the...
It's further past, it's further past.
This is all conservation, presence, it's all the tree.
Yeah, just concentrate right here, this is not really...
Okay, does that help you?
Yes, it does.
All right, thank you.
George can tell you what goes on, sir.
I'm sorry, goes on with what?
Sawdust.
Oh.
Farms use it, for animals, beds, whatnot, is multiple uses, you don't need to stack one pile, it has to generate heat to decompose it.
Do you have plans to do just that, to...
Yeah. I'm not looking to mill all this stuff, leave it in a pile, see when it catches fire. I'm actually gonna take care of it, use it, utilize everything, that's our whole purpose.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Yes, who are we pointing at? Yes, I didn't see a hand, sorry.
I'd just like to bring to the board's attention, chapter 137, the right to farm, voted in under Halifax bylaws. It says in there, under definitions 137-2, the word "farm" shall include any parcel or continuous parcel's land or water bodies used for the primary purposes, purpose of commercial or non-commercial agricultural or accessory thereto, and then lists growing and higher percentage of foresting products upon forest land, and any other forest or lumbering operations. So, I'm pretty sure that this ball's under the right to farm. It says in there, when you read the whole chapter, seems like this is allowable on the property.
Mr. Chairman, if I could clarify, a right-to-farm bylaw does not supersede chapter 48, section 3. So, a right-to-farm bylaw does allow farming, but it doesn't mean that you can just farm wherever you want. You have to, you have to be in the parameters of 48, section 3, from a zoning context.
Which is, okay, thanks, thank you.
And the other answer is to the building commission, we're not putting in and running around the building commission, but if we're, it's sequential, if we get the permit, we even, obviously, we got to get from various municipalities, permits, if we're bringing in from the fire department, you know, to deal with the kiln, or to deal with these, or to bring in a water service with the VFW, all of those things, but you can't get, in other words, the cock in front of the horse, and you'd be applying for permits, because we apply for permits and I'd say, "Well, you don't have..."
Well, in the same breath, too, the building inspector said the same thing, he's received nothing. He, you know, for him to make a determination one way or the other, he has no information to...
Oh, not having a determination, I'm asking you...
No, 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 well, he's making a determination whether there's gonna be a change of use in the property. And for him to do that, he does need to be provided with the correct and full information regarding the use of the property.
Would you talk a special permit for change in non-conforming use?
No, I'm just talking about a normal application to the building inspector for his review on exactly, you know, what's gonna be conducted and changed on the property. Ross, what are you looking for exactly?
The zoning application did state 48, section 6. That's what the zoning application that I had, that's the relief that was sought. So, I mean, if that's the relief that was sought, furthermore, if there hasn't been any determination made by the building inspector, the only thing that this board can do is issue relief that's provided for in the bylaw, which would be a special permit or a variance. There is no determination by the building inspector to be appealing or overturning or appealing. So, if it said it was, they were looking for relief under 48, section 6, which is the extension of a non-conforming use, but if they're looking for a 48, if they're looking for a 48, section 3 determination, that has to be made by the building inspector first. Building inspector can determine if it's agricultural, and if it is, then he can issue a building permit, if a building permit is necessary, he can issue a building permit. That determination can be appealed to you, he can also say it's not agricultural, it's a commercial use, because you're bringing wood in from other properties, therefore, that can...
If they were, if they were looking for relief from section 3?
Yes.
But they're not.
I thought that he just said that he was, so I'm a little confused.
Me too. The application is for whatever relief the board appeals determines applicable, whether it's a special permit, determination of finding, or a variance. And I, from, you know, I can make a variance argument because of the hybrid soils and these other things, but I'm not gonna make that argument right now, in concern that 80% of the property, or 90% of the property, is within the buffer zone, the no-cut zone, and the local bylaw, and these other things, because, to be candid with you, protocol of the board is, it's like, to be frank with you, if we knew the neighbors had concerns, but it's unusual that someone would submit a petition after hearing, not in advance, and not provide the applicant with a copy, so I really can't respond to the individuals, because we don't even know who they are, so I'm just dropping them.
Right, the application itself says the applicant seeks, like Amy said, a general law, chapter 48, section 6, finding special permit, variance, and/or other such relief to enable the change, extension, or alteration of the existing uses on approximately 36.5 acres. So, he is looking for the exemption on, or a variance on section 6, which is what you... Yes, sir, your name, please.
My name's Alina Blackdon, I think that there are two different types of use determinations. One's is zoning, and the other one's... One's a zoning, and the other one is building. So I think we need to be clear as to what we're talking about in terms of which determination should be made. One is by the zoning department, and one is by the building department.
I think we're pretty clear. I think we...
Yeah.
And you've asked... we can vote on what you've asked for.
Sure.
And if there was an appeal to a decision the building inspector had made, that would have already happened. But that hasn't happened. And I don't think anybody... Just to jump in for a second.
Oh, totally.
I don't... I don't... I think you guys are doing a good thing, and I think we all think that. I don't think anybody who submitted the petition, who they have the full right to do that... I would never tell them that they can't submit a petition to the town board during a hearing.
Yeah.
But I all... I think that they're good people trying to do a good thing. I think the issue that people have in this town is not the use that they're trying to do. It's the location and the setup. My biggest... not only is the location a concern for me, but a very big concern for me is that this is a 40-foot opening that we're going to be driving all these trucks through, which we wouldn't be okay anywhere else in town. So that's a concern for me, too. And I don't... my personal concern, I speak for myself, isn't with them. I think they're trying to do a wonderful thing that this town could use. I just... I think the concerns of the residents are valid. I don't know if I'd want a 40-foot gravel driveway to have trucks going in and out. The original use seems to be trees after a storm and trees after power lines. And now it's going to be all year long, trucks coming in and out, which is substantially different and definitely not the same thing. But I don't... it's not anything about the use itself necessarily, and it's not anything about them personally. I think that just the merits of the special permit. I have some serious concerns about that section of town. It doesn't necessarily seem like it fits in, and the residents around them have concerns about that. I think that's entirely fair.
Hold on a second. You've got to take in consideration, when this was a farming operation, when he took it over, there was a lot of heavy traffic. Heavy traffic of tractors, trucks, stuff coming in and out of that area. And nobody complained then. The amount of trucks that are going to go in, probably minimum, of two to three trucks a day, log trucks.
I wouldn't want two to three trucks a day more next to mine.
No. Before, they had tractors, they had, you know, the greenhouse operation and the farming operation were together. There were trucks coming in from people, you know, delivering plants, or him going out to plow the fields and stuff like that. But he... it was a busy... it was a busy place. And nobody complained.
Doesn't mean we don't have any worries.
Yes, sir. Your name, please.
Bill Smith, South Street. He said, I don't believe we're just saying about the amount of trucks coming in and out. And there were complaints about the trucking going in there, because I know a lot of complaints about it. And another thing is, a logging truck is a lot bigger than a hay truck, okay? A lot heavier, causes a lot more damage, you're a lot noisier. That's all I got to say right now.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Your name, please.
And I feel this way. This is a residential neighborhood. I don't mind these people being my neighbors. I don't want this on there. I don't want a big list of funny names. He was saying, the other day, I was able to very... Oh, he can't build his neighborhood up there. Why don't you guys go down and take a look up there? All the programs in there. Never had to have any permits. Just put them up. And now we got to deal with it. It's a residential neighborhood, that's what we want. We don't mind them as neighbors, but we don't want a sawmill. And that's the feeling about it.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Dick?
We have a sawmill right next to it. And it went on River Street. And when it down into my property, it's open sawmill. Because we never knew it.
Chairman, the questions come through the board. Okay, they don't go back and forth. Okay, we are all done? Yes, sir.
Just a call before you... We're going to ask you to vote because I think the board's pretty clear. And that's what they want. The only thing they say is, steady art technology, the sawmill, the kiln, the dirt open is what you want. And here, this one member of the board saying is, you're in favor of agriculture use, but not here. And if that is the case, then that's your... That's your problem.
Yes, Amy.
I just don't understand what the change of use is. This has been 61A now for how long? So it's... how is it a change in use? It's 61A. Boom, going 61A, doing all the things that are listed in the right to farm.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments, questions from the board or anything?
Yeah, I disagree with counsel there. I mean, I'm not... I don't have enough information yet. You know, I like to do it onsite.
I agree.
There was a determination from Rob. I don't have enough information to make... Because I feel if something did happen there, just my opinion about these two that I'm getting is, they would be great neighbors, they would follow the rules to the letter of the law. But we have to be fair to both sides. I call balls and strikes. And I don't... I personally don't feel I have enough information yet.
Kind of information you're looking for, Dan, specifically?
I was talking about a non-conforming use. I want to see specifically, as the zoning enforcement officer does, where things are, the size of the equipment, all that, you know, what their plans are. I just... it's kind of vague. Because it was originally presented as nothing's being expanded, but obviously, things are being expanded. And I want to give them a fair shake, you know? So that's how I feel about it. I don't know about the rest of the board.
How's the rest of the board feel? All right, when we... we're due, so I'm going to close the hearing, you know, for discussion. And I'm going to open it up to the board members. What you feel about an onsite prior to the next... to our May meeting? May, what is it, 6th, 5th? 6th. May 6th hearing. We go out, we walk the property, take a look at it so we have a better understanding. I'm personally, I'm not familiar with it. I've never been back there.
I would like to see it.
Yeah. Why don't we do that?
I agree.
Agree?
Agree.
All right, so I'll take a motion from a... entertain a motion to continue the hearing until May 5th, upon which time we'll set up the site inspection prior to our next hearing.
Mr. Chairman, could we just clarify in the applicant that he is not seeking a variance? Because if he is, we need to count the days. So...
What's that?
Are you seeking a variance?
One of the things we're flashing, but if you want to... If you want to... if you want to wait, we'll wait.
You could provide the board with that, that'd be well appreciated.
Just looking right in really quick that you're not looking for a variance.
Because we have the...
Oh, you're... oh, okay, you'll just extend, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
That good?
Yeah. As long as we have his permission to extend 100 days. If we're even up... I don't know, are you going for up against 100 days?
We have 60 in?
Yeah, we can figure it out.
When is it?
February 8th.
February 8th? Yes, so we wouldn't need a... February 8th. March, April, May, it'd be pretty damn close. It'd be 90-something days, yeah. Yes, the date of the application is February 8th, so it would be run pretty close. So if you could provide the board with an agreement to an extension before you leave.
Just a... Clark, just to understand, if you want a determination, look at the site file. Show a machine, we have this, but this is the issue of the property. It's 100% current. And a change of pre-existing non-conforming use. We need to show that there's a sawmill there. 60 years. We can't empirically show that.
That's understood.
So in other words, if you continue the purpose of trying to figure out something this or that, we're not going to have... we're not going to establish that. That's why I asked for a few different determinations. And the other thing, too, is in other words, we can't have it yet. You know, like consensus of the board. In other words, I don't... we don't want to put any new burden on the board. I know there's a busy schedule in this thing. If his... you know, his three members could say, I'm not in favor of this, then we won't take your time.
Well, that's with every petition. You know, you always run the... you know, you've got to get a majority.
So, Mr. Chairman, if they are not seeking a special permit or an extension of a pre-existing non-conforming use, then what they're looking for from this board is a determination whether this is under section 48, or chapter 48, section 3. This board cannot make that determination without a determination first made by the building inspector. So this would be denied for a procedural denial? Because there's no... you do not have jurisdiction if that is what they're seeking.
That's in essence. She smiled at me, that's the problem.
Well, then, how do we remember that? We'll have to get it... I mean, it specifically says section 6 is what he's...
So would this require the applicant?
Well, it's all related, because there has been a farm there for that period of time. The question we get into is... and this is... again, it's a tough procedural conundrum, you know, as to how you get there.
Well, I think it sounds like it's pretty cut and dry, to be honest with you. We can't get a determination from us unless there's been a denial from the building inspector.
Or approval of somebody else's.
Or approval.
Yes, a determination from the building inspector.
So they would require that the applicant submit plans of some sort to the building department? Correct? So that's the...
With an application? And whether or not the building inspector approves it or denies it, then this board act accordingly. But as we sit right now, we have no jurisdiction to act on this.
If they're seeking a determination from this board, if they are seeking a variance or a special permit, then they are here, rightfully so. Without... they don't have to go through the building inspector first.
All right, what would you recommend, then, Amy? That we continue this until the application process has been submitted through the building inspector? Or do we just close the hearing?
Is the... so is the public hearing notice that you're working under, is that adequate to... for the public to know what you are doing? You can... a zoning board of appeals can change the relief in the middle of a hearing, provided the hearing notice, it's the duetot case. And it's provided that the hearing notice let the public know what the applicant is seeking, even though they were seeking it under the wrong set of relief. So therefore...
So therefore...
We have to look at the hearing notice?
The hearing notice, it was very, very broad.
Okay.
By intention, to cover variance, determination, and a special permit.
But doesn't the fact that they applied for this make the assumption that they think they can't do it by right? And therefore, if they were doing it under section 3, they would just be doing it? And the building inspector or someone else would claim that it isn't an agricultural use, and that's how it will get here? So by applying in the first place, it assumes that it would not be a use under section 3?
And I think that has to do with the mill.
Right.
So...
That the application assumes that it is not... It wouldn't fall under right to farm, otherwise you would just do it. Or is it section 3?
Correct, except...
Which is what we brought up in the last year, to be very honest with you. That was kind of the first question I asked, which was, if you could just do it, why not just do it? Or like it a special permit?
But again, the only way that they could be here to... for you guys to make the determination is under sections 8 and 15 in their... of general law, chapter 48. And both chapters, both sections 8 and 15 require a determination from the building inspector first.
But request for a special permit or variance is not...
Correct.
Could you check the box beforehand?
Yeah, but it's a...
But it would make it a way more difficult situation for them if they invest all this time and effort and money, and then it's not an agriculture use, and that's a disaster.
No, I understood. But exactly, it is... The purpose with the board award is so they don't lose their life savings or appreciate the sentiment of the board's diligence.
So...
We're on the same page. But on the other hand, that's exactly the conundrum. You do not want to be that... It's going to be pulled and rendered agricultural use and then get swatted five years later by a change in municipal officials.
Yeah, but still, we have to do the process.
So one thing to keep in mind is that you can be exempt under 48, section 3, but you still need a building permit. So they will need a building permit to put this mill and kiln inside of a building. And at that point, the building inspector has to make a decision whether this mill and this kiln are exempt or allowed or prohibited in that zoning district. So they could go to the building inspector and ask for a determination based on that. They could file a building permit, but they can't just put up a building. So eventually... So it all does go back to the building inspector, is what I'm trying to say. There's also, I've never heard of any exemption under 61A for structures. It's completely different. 61A has to do with taxes, 48 has to do with zoning.
But we're not asking the building structures. And neither do these students' equipment structures.
But you're putting them inside of a building. You need a building permit for that. You cannot put a kiln inside of a building without a building permit. That is a public safety disaster.
Waiting to have you.
Well, I disagree.
Okay.
I'm trying to think of food. Like you have a building that's on wheels and a trailer. I don't know how that becomes a building.
You said it was going to be inside of a building. So it's going to be housed inside of a building.
The building, like, behind the office, that's where it was going.
So if someone puts a bulk trailer inside a building, you need a...
So with a kiln, you actually need gas for a life permit?
I'm sure.
You're going to need all these permits. You're going to have to go to the building department. You cannot override a building permit.
All right, I understand.
They're going to have to approve the fire department also.
So what would you suggest we do as the board, Amy?
So I think that you... I would actually... I would continue this for a month. I would seek a clarification from the applicant as to exactly what he is... what he's seeking for relief. And then you could go from there. That probably makes the most sense. I could say that if they are seeking this so-called determination under 48, section 3, my advice would be that you do not have jurisdiction at this point.
Bingo. All right, how about a motion? On from the floor, do we continue this hearing until... Until...
On an onsite?
We can still do that. I don't know why not. It's the application still in... before the board. We... and probably kill two birds with one stone, save some time and effort if we do that prior to the next hearing. So do I have a motion to continue this petition number 890 until May, upon which time we'll schedule an onsite? Or do you want us to do that, schedule the onsite right now while we're here? We meet on Monday. Usually, we do them on Saturdays. Is that okay with you? Dick? Yeah? What time, guys? What do you want to do?
Early, early. That's what I mean. Doesn't matter.
Eight, too early?
Nope.
Eight, too early? Eight o'clock, Saturday morning, whatever the date is, 5th or 3rd.
Saturday or 4th?
Yeah.
4th.
Damn. And we'll see you then. Oh, we have a motion? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, this is for onsite.
For to continue till next month with an onsite on the...
Onsite first? I'll make a motion, petition 890, for an onsite visit.
And continue the hearing until...
I think we have to separate. Yeah, do it separately.
Until what? Who was the second?
It's the second.
The second. Almost as safe as I... Five to 0 to 0.
I'll make a motion to continue petition 890.[1783.88]
Yes, the floor, the floor.
The floor.
Yes, nine o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
I'll make a motion to continue petition 890 until May.
Six.
Six.
Do I have a second?
Almost as big as a, aye.
That's so simple.
Yes, that's a really good...
Okay, let's call the meeting, the order, we'll get going. Gentlemen and ladies, could you bring your conversation outside, please, thank you. All except for Martha, who she loves to dance, and she has her toes. Yeah, I know. On the Halifax, zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, January 14, 2019, at 7:05 PM, meeting room number one of the town hall, 499 Plymouth Street in Halifax, Mass, on the application by Tao Mai and Hefang to continue, extend, and alter under 167 8A, B, and C, existing apartments slash multifamily dwellings, special permit number 14, from 1968, from four dwelling units to six dwelling units located at 395 Plymouth Street in Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Tao and Maifang, of 15 Mount Burton Street, Dorchester, Mass, as shown on the assessed map lot number 73-1B, and 73-15A, and 73-15. Title reference book, 48346, page 206. The applicants seek to continue and extend the use of their original special permit of four dwelling units on lot 73-B, that 1B, by combining lot 73-1B and lot 73-15, thereby enlarging the 29,300 square foot lot to 43,000 square feet, area is own business, petition number 886. Gentlemen, how are we doing?
My name's Jose Guzmán, I'm the architect of record on this project.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, nice to meet you. What we have is a pre-existing non-conforming condition, six units where four are allowed, and the building department has requested a Chapter 34 code review to ascertain the conditions under which a special permit should be considered. We get that, it's Chapter 34 review, under this review, we're making some recommendations of the scope of work in order to, for consideration to the board. I'll just enumerate, there's nine of them, and one of them is to install limited areas sprinkler systems.
In which one, the entire building, or just?
Two units.
Just the main house ones?
Yes, this is the way, in terms of our methodology for reviewing code review, it's an existing building, and Chapter 34 incorporates the International Building Code. Under the existing International Building Code, there are several methods to determine how to navigate the code, and it's repairs, alterations, renovations.
Have you reviewed this all with the building inspector?
I gave him a copy, I received that this morning, so I'm going through it.
Digesting it.
So, because it's already existing, and it's not conforming, it's, we're looking at it as an alteration to an existing four-unit building, and because it's under 40%, or 50% of the total size of the project, it falls under Level 2 alterations, and so then, that's where I follow the code.
Bro, you all good with that? Level 2, because I don't know anything about that.
He's working on a Chapter 34, but there may be some things that need to be talked about with me and him, so what needs to be done?
All right, well, good. All right, sorry to interrupt you there, but that was just for my own benefit.
So, based on code review, there's a section that allows limited areas sprinkler systems, and we're proposing to put those on the two units, the main house, which we're calling Unit 5, and the second floor unit, which is the 1R.
Down the other end, that's Unit 6, that's Unit 6?
Well, there's six units, and one of them is by address, is referred to as 1R.
Okay, just to confuse things more. So, we're talking 1R and 5?
And 5R.
Okay, all right.
So, and then, the building exceeds the area that's allowed, which is 7,000, we have a 8,000 square feet, so we need to put a fire, a firewall.
Between?
And we're proposing to put it between, either between Unit 4 and the main house, which is Unit 5, or to put it between Unit 2, 3, and 4, and that Unit 1R in the back, therefore...
To be determined with the building inspector?
And the fire.
And the fire.
Because the fire is...
Sorry, keep interrupting you, but this is just a clarification myself.
Then, you have two different fire areas, which are under the 7,000 square feet.
It's going to be equation.
We are going to install a fire alarm system, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide protections, kitchen and bathroom ventilation upgrades, because they're not, in some cases, they're lacking, and electrical systems upgrades under Chapter 8, not the new code, because the International Building Code offers some relief in terms of existing buildings.
Okay.
And so, in a nutshell, that's basically what we are proposing as the scope of work. And again, obviously, it has to be reviewed by the fire department.
Okay.
See, they may not agree, they may want to see a full sprinkler system, which I'm hoping they do.
Okay, awesome, at least we get some progress here. This gentleman, this is who I'd like to hear from also.
Me?
Yeah, weren't you here this afternoon?
Yes.
Okay. How are you doing with the chicken coops?
Good, we signed a contract after long negotiation.
Okay.
I told them how the process works, and I'm Michael Marshawn from Marshawn Biomet.
Okay.
So, we went over all that, and we came to an agreement, we have a contract, starting the current process right now.
Okay, so then, as required by the building inspector, did have to be a hazardous something report? How are we doing with that?
We will have that probably by the end of the week.
Yeah, because I understand there were some problems with the two chicken coops that had to be removed when another company came in, stopped a shot?
Yeah.
And so, if there were issues there, we want to make sure they're addressed, so that whole report has to...
Yeah, I have no idea about that.
But I mean, the report is in the process.
I'm licensed to inspect this, so I, there were, I didn't find any signs of that, but there's been no testing done, so that's... So, that will be addressed, you know?
If that report comes back as clean, then...
Good to go.
Yeah.
We're flying.
Like I said, I looked at it as a visual, but not as a, it's very unsafe, I mean, it's, you know, it's very, very unsafe to walk around on the second floor or something like that, so...
Okay. So...
That should be done by the end of the week.
By the end of the week?
Yeah.
That's great. How about the application and everything, process to join lots and whatnot, for the septic system and all that?
I think it's been documented at the last meeting, there was an issue brought up, that part, a part, a portion of the building, construction...
The very corner?
Within the, exceeds over the property line.
Has that been determined?
I believe so, I saw a plot plan.
Oh, yeah.
And that's the property line, it's not even the setback.
Damn.
I don't know what the setback requirement is, but...
Not that.
It's not one, someone else is wrong.
Well, what I was hoping is that this section is in some addition that is to be removed, and therefore, you know...
That it's all everything.
Yeah. This is...
Yes, prior to 76, that's been, this building's been up prior to 76, bro. Is this grand, this lot, prior to 76?
The entire structure? We're talking about the farmhouse in the front? Well, we're talking zoning, we're talking instruction?
Structure.
Why does that know that structure's been there for more than 10 days?
More than, yeah, I was wondering if it was more prior to 76, prior to zoning. I would think so, it's been there, it's been there since 1990. When did I get here, 80?
They're discussing the structure that's on the...
Right, they're talking about taking that addition down.
Well, I think they have to.
Yeah.
You cannot, you cannot approve anything that shows the structure on somebody else's property. So, the plan, the proposed plan that comes before you has to show that being removed.
Well, is your...
Because that's completely different from what the previous attorney counsel had told us, that adverse possession, and they were going to buy the property, or swap property, or...
Well, right now, because they're asking for a special permit to continue this non-conforming use.
Yeah.
You have, you would be approving something that's on somebody else's property, so there's a due process issue there with that property owner.
You're talking about removing that structure? Well, I think that the only way to, can you come up for a second and show us something? See this? This is the property line, and this is on somebody else's property, so you have to remove this whole section of the building.
That little piece is going to come off, or the addition, right there.
You have to remove it, or you have to move the wall over, but if you move it over, then it's not... No, it's the whole, it's the whole building, it's the whole length.
It's that whole piece.
See, it's the whole length.
Move the wall?
It's, if you move the wall, then I, the cost to put footings and everything, it's not worth it, I think you're better off by removing it, than having, and it's going to be too narrow, you're not going to be having a use for it. I personally wouldn't do it, because it's...
Cheaper to take it down.
It's cheaper to take it down, and so narrow here, that you move the wall over, but it's up to you. You have to put a continuous footing here that goes four feet below ground, right, and a new wall.
It's just the mid, right here?
No, it's the whole, you see this, the whole, the whole length.
No, not whole length.
Yes, look, it's right here, it's from here to here. See, it's the whole length.
Yeah, see this little, yeah, see this little jaw, that's, this part here, it looks like it's on the property.
On the property, yeah.
But from here up to here, it's on somebody else's property.
See this, this corner, it's corner right here? And this corner is that corner over here, so it's the whole length of that.
It's this whole piece right here, which wasn't addition, it wasn't part of the original house, if I understand correctly.
No, it's an addition, it's clear, you can see that it's... So, it was probably done, you know, someone went in.
Okay.
So, I think that, there's no other way, well, can't it be, how can it be legalized as a, as a piece of non-conforming condition? Through the owner, negotiation?
They can, they can do, if, it is, yeah, it is private party dispute right now, until they're seeking something from you, but they could, they could claim adverse possession, they could claim they own that, they could do a land swap, they could do a lot line change.
But it's got to be remedied before.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, or your, I mean, this board can stake in its decision that that has to be...
Continue the porn.
Yeah, that has to be, or that the proposal is to have that removed, but you are not permitting anything on a third party's property.
Okay. Board members, do we have any questions? Sounds like the, yes, sir.
I just want to make it clear, I'm going to hide it down that chicken coop area, so...
Good idea.
Does any of the buildings are property? I don't want to add anything else.
There you go.
That's a good idea.
Gentlemen, any other questions? I know we went through, I think we're all...
Did we get an answer on the merging of the lots, has that been done?
Yes.
And I don't know if that's...
Rob, was...
He said, "I think so."
Rob, was there a discussion on the merging of the lots? That petition that I read this afternoon showed that the, once the chicken coops come down and whatnot, and the septic system is going to be able to...
Yeah, once the chicken coops comes down, you're not going to have that, that 50-foot setback nonconformity to that structure, so then, the lot that they redesigned will show a septic system on the front, front block. The reason, well, number one, the chicken coop has been basically condemned already, but it's fallen out.
Yeah.
But the reasoning to take it down was because the way the lot was redesigned to keep the septic system on is now creating a nonconformity with that structure because of the lot replacement.
So, once that...
Once that structure is done, it's not going to have that...
They're going to have 40,000 square feet, because that was another concern that we have, so the new lot...
The front?
Yeah, the front needs to have 40,000.
Yeah, they have, I think they have 43 or something with the lots.
With the new lot, and they've already been to the planning board about all that stuff, I don't know. They've been, I don't know, have they been to the planning board to put all that through?
Well, they're planning this.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question too.
Were they, did they combine homes?
Well, not yet.
No, they only created the 40,000 square feet in the front, which created an encroaching on the back building, a lot line close to 50 feet, because the back lot's a state lot. And they're going to have 50 feet of sideline setback, which that back building doesn't mean. So, my question was, can you approve a petition with that other lot now is being approached on?
Can't, we can't.
So, once the building is removed, it will no longer be encroaching, correct? So, there would have to be a requirement in your decision that the building be removed by a date cert? That would be the only way.
That was my next one.
If it's not removed, the permit is revoked.
Sounds good to me. I mean, this is more, more process we've had, yeah.
This is, we've got more answers.
Yeah, my goodness, in the last year.
It's 30 days than a year and a half, this is, this is like Christmas Day.
Merry Christmas to us.
Thank you very much.
In the same breath, too, as town council recommended, even this is great progress and whatnot, there's still going to be some time restrictions on this, this is going to run forever and ever in a day. So, once the determination is made with that, we, this has to be resolved, the addition there that's encroaching on the other property, or everything's just null and void at that point. So, we have the architect, we have the building coming down, how about a contractor? We got a contractor, under contract, to do all this?
The demo.
Yeah, aside from the demo.
The general contractor, because once, we still have to do some permit drawings, there's some...
Okay.
I didn't mention it, that there's an egress issue for that Unit 1R, when you tune to the egress, when you put in the stairway.
Right.
There's some, there's some special documents that we have to give to the building department, at which point we're going to give them to the general contractor to do us a process and...
Okay, what are you talking, what are you going to need for time?
Well, two issues here, one is, how much time, obviously, they're going to have, need time to consider whether they're going to demolish it, or they need to negotiate here to be a landowner, or a land swap, or, I don't know, some familiar option would be landed here. And if they fail, then obviously, they have no choice but to demolish that instead of fallback, right? Then, we need to do, so that will probably require, I don't know much time, three weeks, four weeks?
Okay.
Right, four weeks I would say is reasonable, for them to approach the...
How about May 6th, how's that sound?
Okay.
All right. Good with you guys, I shouldn't just say that without checking with you guys.
The question, this is an awful lot of work you're talking about, right?
In terms of...
In terms of the sprinkler systems, and firewalls, and points of egress, and taking down chicken coops, and taking pieces of the building off, or negotiating the... How long do you suspect that this process will take?
Well, it's...
Because any decision that, this is why I ask, so any decision that we would make in granting the special permit, the concern is that they're looking for those two units to be in place, but we, I wouldn't vote for, in favor of it, if those stipulations, the, could be 500 of them, it sounds like, would all be met, right? How long? How long would that work take?
Okay, well, there are, the main issue here is the sprinkler system, which is where we're proposing a limited area sprinkler system. We need to discuss it with the fire department, uh, the fire chief, whether he will accept that, if not, then we'll have to incorporate a fully sprinkler system, which by the way, then we don't need the fire petition, cause it...
It will, yeah. If you have a sprinkler system, you don't...
There's a danger for that.
I'll look at all the money this time.
With the points of egress and taking pieces of the building off.
Right, so if I were, if I was, if you were to...
Generally, yeah.
If I was to start tomorrow working on the project, I would need a month to do the, to do the drawings, but, but for my, my, my own work.
Yeah, but I mean, till completion, is what I'm asking, not the drawings, not the contracts, until it's complete.
The permit?
No, till, till it is, all of the stipulations have been met.
Oh, okay, I would say, um...
A year?
For, yes. That's fair.
So my, my...
Could I say one more thing? Okay, if, if, if the, if the fire chief is going to resist, uh, to do a sprinkler system, they're gonna request a waiver because of, uh, financial hardship, and for a period of time, it gives them a, a period of time for them to have enough funds available to install the sprinklers.
Which would just make it longer.
Yeah, but again, the permits are all, are gonna expire, they have expiration on them anyway, so as a building permit goes, as a special permit...
And, and the other thing to remember too, is that four units are occupied right now.
Oh, that's right.
So the building inspector is under a different realm of regulations, so, cause he has public safety to worry about, so... So, so regardless of what stipulations you put in, in your decision, if Rob feels that there's some kind of public safety risk, then, then he will also do what he needs to do. But it would be great if, if the stipulations all had a very tight timeline on, considering there are people that live there.
One more, one thing that complicates it is that if the fire chief is still gonna force a bigger building, I don't know whether the asbestos in there or lead, if it's to be abated, so that would, and they're occupied units.
That's a whole other headache.
So, so that, is a, uh, construction that's occupied, which is...
So, Rob, you were, you're planning on looking at all this stuff, you already have been, regardless of whether this permit goes through, you don't need to approve this permit so that this work gets done, right?
I have, I have two things, I have two scenarios, if you don't approve it, then I have to look at it as a four failure, and how to protect it as a four failure with two vacant units. We've gone in there with me and the fire chief, and we've done what we can, uh, they've provided, um, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, to provide, uh, a minimal protection for the people that are...
Four, yeah.
The four units that are occupied now, they both have two means to egress around first floor level, so I have a, a fairly safe feeling about them at this point, but they need to be addressed. They need to be addressed.
I, I think that, that if, if you were to decide to make it only four units, then the, uh, the only recourse is to demolish the buildings, and then you wouldn't have any jurisdiction over the other four units under the code, building code, uh, because they're not seeking to do any alterations or renovations or moving any structures.
All right.
Right, unless the building department, uh, was to sign, issue a citation for, you know, unsafe building.
Mr. Andrews.
Yeah, my question is, what is it that's being applied for?
The application in front of us is, is to change from a, a four unit to a six unit.
When, when the jurisdiction, the five dollars are coming in, they had a special permit in nineteen sixty-eight, for four, for four, and they had to carry four to six. But it wasn't a six unit, now they're looking for a six unit. Now they're looking, so they're looking for a new permit, they're looking for a six, yeah, for a six. But it'd be a brand new permit. Cause it's not a continuation, it's going from four to six, that's not a continuation as a new permit.
This is also a, exists before, like this is...
Right, but it was four units, now looking for six, that's a new permit. I mean, you can't say it was and we're just looking to extend that, so I'm, I'm asking...
The application is... The application is to extend the original special permit from the four dwelling to the six. They're asking to extend it.
But it was never done.
The four dwelling was, nineteen sixty-eight.
The four was granted in nineteen sixty-eight. So what is the why why are they coming under for the six?
The multifamily dwell.
It's a multifamily, the way I see it, I'm sorry, can I?
Hold on a minute.
The hell I see it? Well, I was just wondering what sixty-seven, eight, A, B, and C.
What is it?
One sixty-seven, eight, A, B, and C.
So, yes, so they're seeking a multifamily dwelling, which does not limit the amount of units, and they're, they have a special permit for a four, and now they have like a six, and so...
So they're under multifamily before?
For four, they would have that under multifamily, yes, but they...
What's our, what year?
Nineteen sixty-five or sixty-eight? Sixty-eight.
I don't believe we had multifamily.
They have a special permit from nineteen sixty-eight, but regardless, they need a, they need a special permit under existing for multifamily dwellings, so they're essentially seeking a, a special permit.
So it's not...
Well, I'm not really sure that it, I'm not really sure that, that it matters if it's new because of the fact that they already have a special permit that's on record for four units. They're seeking to increase that, so they have a special permit for multifamily use. So the use is allowed as multifamily. They're seeking to expand the structure to add two more units, so...
But under a multifamily, it's supposed to need forty thousand square feet for you?
Well, that, but that isn't part of the use, that's what I'm trying to say, they're not seeking a, they're not seeking a new special permit for, for the use, the use is already allowed under the nineteen sixty-eight permit.
So they could come in and ask for ten?
I think they could, but by the definition of multifamily dwelling...
Cause I'm just trying to get a feel for where the town is going, because that's, that's what we're looking at, we're gonna have, hot houses with ten to twelve units, if there was a special permit, who's gonna, you know...
No, they still have to come in for an extension, that's what I'm saying.
Just come in, give us the balance, and then give us the new ones.
So what I, what I would suggest is that we look to, um, amend the, the definition of multifamily dwelling, to limit it to a certain amount of units.
So you're, you're saying for forty thousand, it would be limited?
The forty, no, so, so now we go, so the use is staying the same. Now, they have dimensional issues with the structure, because they don't need the forty thousand, they don't need setbacks, there's all, and they're changing all of this, so that's why they're here for a special permit.
But they don't need any of the setbacks.
But, so, but what I'm saying is they, you know, even if they need a new special permit, the use is staying the same.
So it's a use front that they're granting?
Right, that's what they, that's what they've sought, yes. The structure, unfortunately, the structure is most likely now, now, most likely nonconforming.
That's what I'm trying to get at, especially in a world, we have a structure that is staying nonconforming...
Yes, but the use is under the special permit.
Yeah, but we have a nonconforming structure, and we're increasing the number of units, so, I mean, I don't see where the protection for the town, cause you're talking about public safety, where's the public safety? This, this house is built right on the lot line, fifteen feet from the other house, so a fire there could catch on to the other house, I mean, thirty-foot setback, the thirty-foot setbacks that we have are just tossed out the window, there's no...
No, they're not tossed out the window, because...
Yeah, they are.
They're pre-existing nonconformity.
No, they're tossed out the window at this point, cause they're not, they're non-existent, okay? So it's not, they don't want to rent this at all. And, and the fact of the matter is, is now, just because it was used there at one time, it just can be added to and added to and added to. Because the house isn't the same as what it was at, that's had addition after addition after addition, it weren't permits old on it, it was just added to.
Well, well, what is the significance between...
Four and six?
No, what is the significance that it's a new special permit, because it's under the same review guidelines for the zoning deals? A special permit is a special permit, whether it's the extension of something, they still need a special permit, or whether it's a new special permit, they still need a special permit, the, the review standards are the same.
Well, I'm confused with the end of it, so I'm just...
Right, but no, I'm confused by why you're, why you're making a distinction between a new special permit or not.
Cause there's a distinction between one sixty-seven and seven D, which says that you need to have a permit under one sixty-seven, seven D for apartments and more than...
Right, and they have a special permit. They have a recorded special permit.
So it's a normal for new, like, uh, regulation, right?
Right, but for the use, they already have one, so they wouldn't need a new one.
Okay, I'm just getting a feel for where we're going, because...
I think, I think your concern would be, could definitely be easily addressed by a definition change, I just...
A lot of it.
Yeah.
I mean, by law, it needs to work, so I'm trying to get a feel for, you know, what we need to look at.
That's what you wanted, you, if you're looking to limit, and...
Because everybody was under the impression up until a couple of years ago, that for each unit, you needed forty thousand square feet, and that's why we maintain, I mean, if you look at Iowa, everything is forty thousand square feet, from residential to business to commercial, uh, and if you're building a multifamily, you need forty thousand square feet. So that's what's keeping our community where it was at, now it looks like we're strong in the color, and we're gonna be able to get the bottom building in here, and, you know, that, to me, is gonna change the outlook of the town, that's all.
That's right. So, so one of the things is that, there's two definitions, one's multifamily development and one is multifamily dwelling, um, and I, I did previously opine on this, um, that this is not considered a multifamily development, this is considered a multifamily dwelling, and there, there is a difference, so, um, and that's where, that's where the forty thousand is meant, under multifamily development.
Development.
So in essence, they could ask for ten of them too.
What were you saying, Bob? Did you...
I think you're right with the forty thousand square feet, if it was a new special permit, but they already have a special permit, they're just extending it.
But do you see what I'm saying, that everybody's under the impression that that's what it was?
From my interpretation of the bylaws, I think extending a special permit, they could ask for ten, and it could be given to them. They could ask for ten, and it could be given to them, but I think if it was a new special permit, it falls under the guidelines of forty thousand.
So if you have something that's non, nonconforming, you could get more, if you come in and do something brand new.
Doesn't mean they're gonna get it.
Not easy, but I'm saying, if you're coming with something new, then you're gonna have to follow these bylaws, but if you're nonconforming, you can ask for whatever you want.
We do, we deal with that stuff, that's, like, all the streets over on the, the apps and all that stuff.
The size of the structure too, I mean, you don't have twenty minutes on forty thousand square foot, you're not gonna get to set the design in there.
Yeah, the code does...
It can only have so much of the land.
But we're constantly answering questions about non-conformities and extending them when people are redoing houses, like earlier tonight, like, that wasn't necessarily an increase in the nonconformity, but people are coming to ask us that stuff all the time, we can approve or deny them, you know?
Amy.
So, um, we were asking for a hardship from the...
For variances. This is special permit.
To me, this is changing a special permit, cause it is four units, and you're changing it to six, it's not the same apartment, it would be like me changing my house to a four bedroom from a two, and trying to keep the same building coming, it doesn't work that way, and why are we so worried about changing a farm, that's a farm, lot sixty-one A, and saying that there's a change in use, which there is not a change in use, it's sixty-one A and there's a sawmill there, how does this even, and now we're allowing a special permit to change a four? This is a town that adopted the right farm, which was not, in my idea, to already have six.
Amy, we gotta stick to this, this petition that's in front of us.
There's a point to this, so the sixty-one A, the people, I saw houses in this town, and there's a four, there's an acre zoning, acre zoning belongs in this town, so how does it change for a multifamily? No, acre zoning into this town.
So there's, there's plenty of houses that don't have an acre that ask to change their houses, that's arguably to be, if that's what they get, but, but I don't know if anybody's approving anything, we've been sitting with these people for a year now, asking for all sorts of stuff, you know?
Rob.
Four family is a multifamily dwelling, six family is a multifamily dwelling, it's the same issue.
Yes, sir.
Is it two family?
Mr. Dan.
Was, was this property once have six apartments in?
Did it have?
Yeah.
I'm sure it was used for six apartments.
Right, right, when the, when the current owners bought it, were there six apartments?
Were there six apartments, yes.
Right, so the town knew, and I know the town knew there were six apartments for a long time, and there was no complaints.
This is...
Some, you know, they, 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 they...
They kept it.
So, so, when, when it was found out, I believe that it was only permitted for four, and it was, um...
This all stemmed from the board, how fine, somebody letting up the walls, they asked me to go out, there was some wording around the structure, so I had to investigate the property, um, the pool house was permitted for, for pool cabana, it wasn't supposed to be animal living in it, there was a kitchen, bedroom, somebody living in there, and this whole thing snowballed, so as I looked at it further, I found that they had a special permit for a four family in nineteen sixty-eight.
So I view this as, the current owners are trying, to the best of their ability, bring what they bought, six apartments, up to code, on a multifamily dwelling, not a multifamily development. I think this is cut and dried, I don't think we really need to, I think they're trying to do the right thing, and we're just trying to impress upon them that the time has gone by, you have to move on forward now.
Okay, so where are we? We're, uh, what do we need? We, uh, how are we set for time on this, by the way?
We had to extend it last time.
Did you?
Yeah, they had to come back.
Thirty days, sixty days, what do you get?
How long do we extend for?
Thirty days.
Okay, for today.
Just extend it till today? So if this is gonna get remedied, we have to extend it again?
Well, unless you're satisfied, you have all the information you need, you can close it, and then, if this is a special permit, you have ninety days to issue a decision.
Okay.
So...
From the close of the hearing?
Mm-hmm. For a special permit, a variance, you only have a hundred days total, but a special permit, you have sixty-five days to open it, then you have technically unlimited time to act on it, and then once you close the hearing, you have ninety days to issue a decision.
Bottom boom. So, how does that sound to the applicant? Okay, we're gonna, okay, we're gonna, we, we close the, uh, the meeting on this, you have ninety days, you have ninety days to determine compliance. I'm sorry, I thought you said ninety.
You have to make your decision within ninety.
Oh.
It has to be voted on, drafted, voted on, and then you have fourteen days to file with the town.
What if nothing happens within that ninety days?
I think there's, so, um, I actually would suggest that you draft a decision with requirements, with clear requirements, with set time limits, so therefore, they have to remove that structure that's encroaching within three months, or one month, or whatever time limits you want, but then, but that's it, they have to do it within then, and then you have explicit language in the decision stating, if they do not do it, then you revoke, the special permit is revoked. And obviously, no occupancy permit will be issued until, until Rob is satisfied, and conditions of, of, of this board are satisfied.
Yikes.
So we, we vote on it tonight with a special permit with conditions.
So what I, what I would do is I would, I would close it, and, um, why don't, why don't I work with the chair and before I...
That'd be great.
...draft a decision, and then I'll bring you a decision on our final basis.
All right.
Amy, that'd be awesome, cause I'd probably really... Because I'd probably really go crazy trying to do that myself. Uh, all right, how about a...
So a motion to close.
Yeah, a motion to close.
Make a motion to close eight ninety?
Are you sure? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll go by a voice vote. Jerry?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Are you sure? Decided? And myself, yes. Five zero zero, motion passes. We close the hearing on petition number...
Eight eight six.
Eight eight six. Uh, in the meantime, uh, I'll work with Amy on language. On the, on the decision would be, would be awesome.
Yes, and then I'll also provide your language with regard to the, um, the five-year review on the prior, um, application, yeah, the, um, three forty.
What wants it?
Yes, so I'll provide you that language with regard to review of the open meeting, so...
Awesome.
Public opinion, so the public hearing.
Yes, that'd be great. In the meantime, you guys rock and roll with, with, uh, the inspector slash fire and get things going, because it's been closed. We have sixty days and then ninety for the decision.
If necessary, I can come to a meeting with you and then...
Yeah.
To discuss the solution.
You were right.
Yeah. You second it?
Yeah.
No, you second it.
No, uh... Cherry, second. You gotta stop drinking and stuff. Okay, how about a motion to close the hearing? Yeah, adjourned.
Any other business to do, adjourn?
No, I don't want to do anything. What other business do we have? Alan, cut it out.
All right.
Sir.
I think we have the other minutes to do, we have the letters and all that.
We did both minutes.
We did the minutes. Did you do both minutes?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. We just slipped on this end.
Okay, let's go, let's go through the mail. We'll do the mail quickly, the letter from the planning board to Mr. Bergstrom regarding Mudfest. We have a letter from attorney Owen Burgo regarding to a South Street. That was an already discussed letter from Brooks and the rectorance with attached motions and exhibits regarding Amanda's estate. It's a memo from the planning board for Form A at three ninety-five Plimpton Street, old column, he filed a planning council agenda. We have a notice of hearing from the Plimpton ZBA regarding twenty-two Globe Street special permit and a memo from the planning board for, regarding Franklin Street with attached a Form A. We did the bills, Pitney, we did all of them? Ah, other, other business slash discussion. Gordon C. Andrews, open meeting law complaint to the ZBA regarding March eleventh, two thousand nineteenth meeting. Yes. Amy, have you received anything on that?
I haven't.
The March eleventh, uh, meeting, two thousand nineteenth, zoning board of appeals meeting. Uh, the Halifax zoning board of appeals once again violated the open meeting law by going into executive session improperly and allowing a member to participate who had previously accused himself from this matter, which was posted on the agenda but not actually mentioned for the reason for going into executive session. This complaint is the same as what happened from the July meeting and my previous complaint in October, which was on the agenda for, for the March eleventh, two thousand nineteenth meeting. Back to Gordon C. Andrews, two forty-four Allen Street in Halifax.
Do you hear me? So it's like the, um, the videotape had stopped. Um, and then recorded, we still have a recording, a voice recording of, because I have a reason itself, and motioning to go into that executive decision.
Okay, is, uh, I was in here, I was in here.
I worked the meeting.
Yeah, he was refused, you could hear him, actually, Dirk, Mr. Dirk. He's in the extra room. No, but it's all on the, the voice recording.
Okay, all right, but in, in any case, uh, this was brought to the attention of, uh, Charles Seelig and he was, uh, handling the response to it.
Charlie's in the room.
No, we have to, you and the board have to respond. To, so, so we want to respond.
Yes.
You respond with our names responsibly, that's fine.
Do what?
Oh, okay.
She responded back.
I did respond from that, I have on the voice recording, but...
So I think if you just copy what she sent to me from you, I think it helps.
All right, I'll redo that with you and we'll do a response. All right?
Sure. I mean, that's all.
Okay, are we good? We clear everything? We got everything done down here? Next scheduled meeting, May sixth, two thousand nineteen. All right, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have your second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Let's go.